...city meetings on YouTube. And since November, I probably have 700 videos posted. Most of the planning commission meetings between 2005 and 2008 are posted, as well as city council meetings from 25 years ago when I was young. And so you can access, there's an index of all the videos on epoa.us. And they're broken down by subject. So each item you discuss is a separate video. And ultimately, you can sort the list and then you can put together each video for, every time the same item is discussed, you can find it in one place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other public comments? Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I'm a resident of Emeryville. For the last, for the last six months, I have been battling with the MTC Metropolitan Transportation Department to get attention to the situation of the homeless. That was before the demolition, the planned demolition of the old bridge. And I haven't made much progress. I've been trying to get wave by challenging the bold situation on the bridge, but they haven't moved. They ignore. I guess this is part of their political process. I'm trying, I'm trying to get the city council to make a resolution backing my plan for saving the old bridge, for the bridge to be transformed into a homeless situation. What we need to do is make separation for the habitat, because the bridge is all set up with all the utility. And we can do that at a cheap cost and fast and efficiently, instead of demolition the bridge, in which, I don't know if you are aware of, in 205, the transportation department contracted over $300 million to demolish the bridge. And this is ridiculous. This is a 205 estimate. And it will reach certainly a billion dollar by the time we finish it today. So I also want to make a point to the homeless situation. Years ago, Mr. Bukowski told me in the line at the safe way that his friend passed away and luckily, he inherited his property. So Mr. Bukowski is not a poor man anymore. Otherwise, I think with the compensation he gets from the city council, he'll be homeless too. Same thing as Mr., my friend here. If he won't receive the subsidy from the city, he'll be in bad shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. My name's Brad Helfenberger. I'm the president of Camp. And I would just like to express my support for the proposed contract between the City of Emeryville, Mesa, and Camp. As the president, I presided over the negotiations on Camp's behalf, along with my bargaining team. And in my opinion, the city's representatives conducted negotiations in good faith. And I think it's a good contract for all parties concerned. The contract was voted on by our membership and was passed unanimously with a 92% voter turnout rate.
Oh, good.
So, and I'd also like to take the opportunity to...
Sorry.
Nope. That wasn't me.
That was not you. That was me. Sorry.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the city's representatives for conducting the negotiations in a fair and impartial manner. And being patient with me, because it was my first time being involved in negotiations for a labor contract. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay.
Move the consent calendar.
And I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have no policy items, no administrative items. And with that, that meeting is adjourned. Now, moving on...
Excuse me, Mayor Asher.
Yes?
I need a minute, when you do it that quickly.
Okay. Next, we'll be looking at the blue agenda for everyone out in the audience.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the City of Emeryville, a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. We'll call, we're still all here. And so now, if everyone will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now is the time for public comment.
Yes, I just want to verify that Andre was at the MTC meeting, because I had begun recording their meetings and posting them on YouTube. And the first video I shot was Andre. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else? Public comment?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Status report on Oversight Board Legal Expenditures. It hasn't been met, and...
No report.
No report. And with that, that meeting is adjourned. Okay. Now, we're on to...
Wait, excuse me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, I promise.
I'm a little rusty. It's been a minute.
Have to get to it myself.
Oh, 926 pages.
It is a big one, 926 pages. At that point, we just start measuring by weight.
By iPad weight.
Okay. Yeah. Are you ready, Karen?
Yes.
Okay. So I call this meeting to order. This is the Emeryville City Council's regular meeting. Again, we're all here. And we'll begin with the special orders of the day, and that is the State of the City address. So give me just a second. Now I have to set up my computer down here. Okay. Let's see if I can play. No. Okay. Whoops. Shouldn't play be over here?
It's on slideshow. It's on slideshow.
This?
Under the slideshow.
That? Is that gonna do it?
Oh.
I told Sabrina this. I said there's gonna end up, a picture of my cat will end up there. This happens every time I teach, and I want you to know that I removed that from my desktop three years ago. So the cat continues to haunt everything that I do. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Asher, the current mayor of the City of Emeryville. And along with Sabrina Landreth, our city manager, I'm gonna be talking to you about the state of our city this evening. So we'll begin with some recent news. I was selected as mayor in December, and at that time, Ruth Atkins was selected as vice mayor. And your city continues to benefit from the hard work of Kurt Brinkman, Nora Davis, and Jennifer West as our fellow city council members. This year, we will be having an election in 2014. The city has moved to even-year elections. The council did this by voting to extend terms by one year to 2014 and 2016. And we did this because, in part, we were one of the few municipalities in the area that was still on odd-year elections. So we're really looking forward to increase voter turnout with the change to even-years. We can, we continue to consider what's next after the elimination of redevelopment. Redevelopment was a financing mechanism that Emeryville used in order to build projects and attract development to our city. And without redevelopment, we need to think about how we will continue to build and improve our city infrastructure and projects going forward. Also, in 2013, Pat O'Keefe retired, and Sabrina Landreth was hired by the city council to serve as the city manager. So this evening, while I'm going to provide a summary from each of the departments within the city, I'm, I'm gonna take a particular focus. And I'll try to make it short. I'm used to speaking in an hour and 20-minute blocks. That's how long my classes are, so I can go on, but I will try not to do that. What I wanna do is I wanna talk about the economic health of the city. But I, I wanna couch it in a little bit of a different context. I wanna spend some time linking that to services and to the vision that I believe should be coupled with any discussion about economic health and future growth. So like I've said, the city changed, right? With the use of redevelopment. We've invested millions of dollars in improvements. And we need to have corresponding policies that are meant to draw people toward resources and draw people to our community. We talk quite a bit about attracting business in town, but we also need to attract and retain people that live here. And in particular, I think we need to work to keep those who are vulnerable close to resources. This includes the elderly, families and children, and people living below the poverty line. I want us, in short, to be a just city. And I'm going to focus on just a couple of areas in order to illustrate what I mean by this. So we're only 1.2 square miles, but we have a lot in our favor, right? We have urban density, we have our proximity to the Bay, we have economic stability. And I believe that we need to keep an eye on equity and justice. The good news is, we already have the social infrastructure in place to ensure this kind of work in our city. What I'm calling for is expanding and strengthening it, especially as our city becomes less affordable for many people. And one thing that I wanna mention, something that kind of operates in the background of what I'm asking for here, is what I'll simply call good government. In terms of what I mean by good government, I mean that our processes are transparent, we provide excellent services, your electeds and city staff are accessible, and the wider community is engaged in the government of the City of Emeryville. I'm very biased, but I believe we do well in all of these areas. We currently have 10 standing committees in the City of Emeryville, and there are 87 volunteers serving their community in this way. And I think this is a sign of what I would call a good government, right? And a government that has the ability to confront new challenges and work with new We have recently attracted new businesses and seen growth of the ones that are already here. Some of them are listed. We have AAA out in the towers. The headquarters for Grocery Outlet is now located in Emeryville. We've had the remodel at Pack and Save, the expansion of Pete's Coffee, and then the opening of Uniqlo, which apparently brought lines around the block at, at Bay Street. And this is good news. And when we consider new and expanded business, it's always coupled, for me, with how we are serving people who live and work here, and how we can draw more people of all income levels toward the new resources that the city generates. So again, as we think about attracting businesses to town, we need these corresponding services that keep and attract people who live and work here. And the policies and vision behind both of these efforts need to be linked, and they need to be equally well-planned and well-funded. On the human services side, I feel this is crucial, as Emeryville and the surrounding areas become less and less affordable to live in. We can, in effect, help with affordability in Emeryville. We can remove barriers to work and provide stability for people through the provision of services. We can make the city more affordable by enhancing and investing in programs that we've already established. We have decades of history behind these efforts: childcare, before and after-school youth services, and affordable housing. I look at all of these as important factors in helping us to become a more just city. And let me start, where I often do, with childcare. And I talk about childcare a lot, and I think that maybe people misinterpret this. They think that I do this because I'm a mother. Not exactly. They think that I do this maybe because I'm a woman. And I think that this is an issue that disproportionately affects women. But I talk about childcare because I need to work, right? Many people in the Bay Area, with the increasing cost of living, must work. They must often have a double-earner household to keep up with costs here. Moreover, parents have often invested years of training and education toward their jobs. Childcare allows people to work. In the larger schemes, scheme of things, childcare and funding for childcare has been eroded. In the wake of the Great Recession, the state of California cut back on its subsidy for CalWorks, which subsidizes, subsidizes childcare for low-income families. That cut was about 40%. And Emeryville enacted similar levels of cuts to our child development program in the wake of, of budget strains. So in terms of the state, there's talk of a partial restoration of these funds offered up in the latest state budget. But childcare is a system that was underfunded long before 2009. And without reliable, affordable childcare, parents face a barrier to work, to school, and to improving their, improving their skills. So even for families who consider themselves middle-class, in almost every state in the U.S., the cost of preschool is on par with rent. And you can see this from the numbers that I've provided up here. That first number, 1184, is how much it would cost per month to have your four-year-old in daycare. 1627, that would be for an infant. And these are the resident rates, which have a kind of discount built into them at the Emeryville Child Development Center. So what you can see, when you look at this, is that if you have two kids, let's say, you'll be paying around $2,800 a month for the privilege of working outside the home and using your skills. It's a real crisis for the state's workforce. We're pushing and pricing parents, and perhaps disproportionately women, out of the workforce. I think we want families to stay in the city. I hope we do, and in our region. But we need to remember that daycare can price them out. We have a Child Development Center that has been in our city for decades. We're one of the first facilities to offer infant care in Alameda County. And we need to put in place policies and funding that enable parents at all income levels to go to work. I'd like to see discussions of economic development coupled with discussions of the need for truly affordable childcare. The economy may be rebounding, but not for everyone. And we need these kinds of supports to reach a broader range of families. Within the City of Emeryville, we can take, take a look at our current level of service for youth and see that we actually have a lot of successes. So I just wanna highlight a few of these here. Eighty-four infants, toddlers, and pre-K children received daily care at the Emeryville Child Development Center. Twenty-one out of 34 children who graduated from ECDC in August continued their education at Anna Yates Elementary School. And what that means with that graduating class of 34 children at ECDC, that it, they took up an entire kindergarten class over at Anna Yates. And that means those parents stayed connected to the city in some way. And to me, that number is about the continuity and the building of community. We have 120 K through sixth-grade children that attend the after-school program daily. Again, if you go to work, you need after-school care. And this is 100% increase from last year. So that's a tremendous success. Thirty-five children were able to participate in the after-school program with the implementation of a sliding scale fee. And we have more than 50 teens participating daily in the teen center programs and activities, and that's a 50% increase. So we are doing something right, and I hope that this is something that we can build on. Services to youth are important, and I wanna point out that the title "youth services" or childcare services, it's misleading. That while the services are geared toward the youngest members of our community, they have always an immediate, multi-generational effect. To serve children is to serve at least one and possibly more adults. To have before and after-school care, to have pre-K care, is to allow adults to work, to go to school, to participate in their community. And I think we should keep this in mind, this kind of multiplier effect, as we are considering what we are spending on these activities. Also, within community services. In addition to providing services and care for the youngest members of our community, our senior center enjoys an excellent local reputation. It is very popular. There are over 14,000 visits recorded at the senior center, over 3,700 trips taken, over 3,000 Meals on Wheels delivered, and there's a large volunteer force that, that helps with that. Over 3,000 rides were provided by our Eight to Go Transportation Service. And in fact, what I would like us to do is I would like us to consider what we do for our seniors in this community as a model for other segments of the community. We provide many housing options and a rich social network and supportive services for seniors. Moreover, living close to the senior center in the triangle, I can also say that our senior center is an anchor for that neighborhood. It's a non-commercial building that enlivenes the neighborhood around it. So the Community Services Program continues to support early childhood education, enhance teen community involvement, develop and implement youth sports, and gives the, gives seniors the opportunity to age in place, and creates a sense of community through intergenerational programs and special events. Okay. Now, from that, I'd like to turn to what I consider another element of affordability, and one that certainly, if you've picked up the newspaper recently, in the Bay Area, you've read about, that there is an affordable housing crisis in the Bay Area. I serve on a regional body. It's the Housing Authority for Alameda County, HACA. And while HACA deals primarily with federally funded programs for affordable housing, it provides me with an understanding of how limited the funding opportunities are and have been for affordable housing. The current affordable housing crisis in our region has been a long time in the making, and it's widespread. So with this in mind, what can we in Emeryville do to create a more, to create more affordable housing and draw people from all income levels toward resources and community? Well, with the dissolution of redevelopment, things change. The city council did elect to retain the Redevelopment Agency's housing assets. However, without redevelopment, there's no ongoing tax increment to support affordable housing. And prior to the dissolution of the RDA, Emeryville received $6 million annually for affordable housing. So kind of keep that number in mind. $6 million annually that we no longer have. We need to, as a city, have a discussion about what the loss of these funds means to our ability to serve lower-income people and our ability to draw people toward resources and keep people of all income levels in our town. So there are policies that we have in order to guide our affordable housing program. And again, the question becomes, how are we going to pay for it? Right? ABAG is a regional body, and one of the things that they do is they assign a fair-share number of housing units for income levels to each municipality. They do this considering growth, right? And we can take a look at Emeryville's record around regional housing needs and our allocation. You can see here, from 2006 to 2014, the percent achieved over in this last column. But it doesn't tell the whole story, because Emeryville did much better than a lot of municipalities in building affordable units. But what it's telling us, right, is that we are falling short, and everyone is falling short in meeting what is a demand and a tremendous need for low-income housing. And this need is going to grow. We can see in 2014, the percent change, right? They expect us to build even more very-low-income, low-income, moderate-income, above-moderate-income housing. What have we done so far? I mean, again, we have a good basis to work from. We've built new affordable, family-friendly housing developments, the Ambassador Housing Units, that's 68 units of extremely low and very low housing. And we'll get a report in the coming months that'll let us know how many Emeryville residents and families served by our school were able to find a spot at the Ambassador. Because as prices rise, people may not be able to keep up. This is something we'll be seeing in the city. You'll also see that both the Ambassador and 3706 San Pablo are developments that are extremely close to the AD Freeway. And this means that as a city, right, and as a just city, we need to make an effort to do what we can to improve livability in those areas for those families. Better, safer spaces, connections to West Oakland, and more greenery and walkability on this side of town is something that we should be mindful of, that we have plans for, as we bring families toward these new housing resources. And we've done a lot of work in order to bring people toward these resources in the past. This is what this slide shows us. You can see here that we've created housing with an eye toward non-traditionally-abled populations at the Magnolia Terrace, at the Ambassador, and then also proposed at 3706 San Pablo. And we also have a goal to create a variety of housing types to meet diverse needs. Just as we want seniors to age in place in Emeryville, I would hope that we would also want people parenting young children to be able to do the same. So I'm glad to see that we're working on family-friendly housing design guidelines. And in addition to these types of housing, I would also like us to think about perhaps another co-op, another co-op or co-housing development. Within our town, we can see that these developments have many people serving Emeryville through city committees, city events, like Celebration of the Arts, the Planning Commission, the School Board, city council, grassroots resident organizations, and perhaps active people self-select for this kind of housing type. That may be part of what's going on. But I also believe that secure housing that is affordable gives people a base to work from. If they're not worried about the rising cost of rent, and if their housing situation is secure, you've removed a barrier to participation in the community. One more thing that I want to talk about. As the cost of housing increases, I think we may see more homelessness in our community. The city provides funds in support of the following: the Berkeley Food and Housing Project, the Alameda County Homeless Management Information System, and we also participate in Alameda County's Everyone Home Program. And this is an issue that our city manager, Sabrina Landreth, is going to be working on with neighboring municipalities as well. Now with this, I'm going to hand it over to Sabrina Landreth, our city manager, to step in to present on capital improvement program and the city finances. There we go. So just really briefly, I wanna go through, as the mayor said, a little bit about our budget and our capital improvement program. Those are usually key words to folks at home to go take a restroom break. But I do wanna urge you to, to pay attention to this. This is, you know, the city's budget is our key policy document that guides all of these programs that all of us care so dearly about. So the city has an operating budget of approximately $30 million that funds the majority of the city programs and services. The, we also have a capital improvement budget, which funds our construction, major construction and major maintenance. The pie chart there shows you in the current year what our general fund revenue, where it comes from. As you can see there, we have property tax that comes in at approximately just 6% of our total budget there. And in comparison to the one right below it, which is the cardroom tax, which brings in 8% of our city's revenue. I just wanna point that out to all of you, just so that you can see the, the order of magnitude. And where does our city, where does our money go? Well, this is our general fund budget. As you can see there, the majority goes to police and fire, which makes up 54% of our operating budget, which is not unlike most cities. And I wanna talk a little bit about our capital improvement program. And as we go through this, you'll see how this is a little bit of a different conversation than we have had in previous years. Our prior CIP, it's Capital Improvement
Our prior CIP, it's a capital improvement program, was approved in December of 2006, and that covered us through fiscal year 2010-11. That program had an estimated cost, had projects in there that would cost $380 million. Only 200 of that was actually funded. As you can see right there, only 65 million of that was proposed to be funded out of the city's operating budget. The rest of it, 144 million, was going to come from redevelopment. As you all know, that funding source no longer exists. The average annual budget in that proposal was anywhere between 12 to $51 million, just for capital projects. This chart here shows you over the years what was actually spent. The green shows what was coming out of the city, and the blue shows you redevelopment. So the most recent year that we show there is in 2011. As you can see, redevelopment took up almost 100% of that. The last time that the council reviewed a draft CIP was in January of 2011. Most of you are well aware of what happened in January of 2011. We faced the sudden dissolution of redevelopment. That put any further action on that plan on hold pending resolution and shakeout of that. The city is in a place now where it has to develop new funding mechanisms. There's no more tax increment revenue, there's no more tax allocation bond financing. As you can see here, the city has historically, every year, put aside money to be used for, at the end of the year, to be put towards unfunded liabilities, and that included capital needs. So the city's been extremely prudent over the years. For example, in March of 2013, there was 3.2 million that was set aside as a surplus. In addition to that, last June, the council adopted a policy on what are known as the Boomerang Funds, which are funds that are coming back to the city as part of the dissolution of redevelopment, to set aside 75% of it into our capital improvement program, 25% for affordable housing, and 5% for economic development. So we've, so far in the last couple of years, we've set aside $7.6 million. Currently, city staff is in the process of developing the next five-year plan. It will be coming to the city council and to the public over the course of the next six weeks or so at the various committees. We'll be presenting our proposal for the next, as I said, the next five years with the first two years of appropriations. We'll be looking at everything from community facilities, parks, public art, affordable housing, bike ped, transportation and streets, and I can guarantee you, there will be more projects in there than we have money for. And then the draft CIP will come to you in the March-April timeframe as part of the discussion of the overall budget. We just wanted to show you there just order of magnitude what some of these projects that will come to you, what the needs are. Just for our EOC or Corporation Yard alone, we have an estimated cost of $6.8 million. Again, I want, remember the slide that I showed you with the chart showing how much city dollars were going towards capital improvement over the years, and I can tell you, it was less than $6.8 million. We show up there just a few other programs, or a few other projects that are substantial, that are necessary, that will be coming to you, in addition to all of our annual programs that we fund. So our street rehabs, our sidewalk improvements, storm drain improvements, and sewer rehabs. And then, little briefly, I just would like to touch on the city's debt. The city has only one long-term debt obligation. This is fantastic. We recently refinanced this, and we're able to save about $1.3 million for the general fund. This debt continues until 2028. The majority of our debt, as you'll see in the next slide, is actually from the former redevelopment agency, and is being funded now out of those, the property taxes revenues that are generated within those former redevelopment agencies, or former redevelopment areas. This chart, as you can see here, we have approximately $162 million that is outstanding as of the end of last year, that is attributed to the successor agency or former redevelopment agency, and just $4.7 million that is from the city. This last chart here shows you just what we're paying on an annual basis to cover the debt payments and the expenses. The city is paying just $484,000 a year out of its general fund to cover that one outstanding issuance, and the successor agency is paying upwards of about $15 million. Again, these are funds that are coming from former redevelopment agency, or former redevelopment areas, and as that debt is retired over time, then those dollars will be freed up and redistributed to the city and other taxing entities. And with that, I'm going to give it back to the mayor, who will cover the charter city.
Thank you, Sabrina. Okay, so, looking at the need for affordability, looking at our very ambitious capital improvement project list, I want us to think about what we can do in the wake of the loss of redevelopment. One of the things that I've been thinking about, gathering information about, is becoming a charter city. Currently, Emeryville is a general law city, and general law cities are governed by state law in matters of statewide, as well as municipal affairs. There are 121 charter cities in California, but more importantly for me and for this conversation, many of our neighbors are charter cities, including Alameda, Albany, Berkeley, Oakland, San Francisco, and Piedmont. So why would we adopt a charter city? I promise you, it's connected to our discussions about money. Charters are generally adopted by voters in cities to address issues, conditions, or needs that can't be met by state laws. Cities can adopt a charter to free themselves from requirements of some of the state's general laws pertaining to municipal affairs, such as limitations related to contracting. But with the recent elimination of redevelopment in the state, this has caused an increasing number of general law cities to consider becoming a charter city, in order to take advantage of a charter city's ability to adopt a local property transfer tax, subject to the Prop 218 requirements mandating voter approval. So even if we had voter approval to increase our property transfer tax, we can't do that as a general law city. We could only do that as a charter city. So in order to capture this tax, a tax that the vast majority of municipalities around us use, we need to become a charter city. And again, here's that slide. 6% is what we get from property taxes, and our cardroom tax, right underneath it, at 8%. So a city charter doesn't need to set out every municipal affair that the city would like to govern, so long as the charter contains a declaration that the city intends to avail itself the full power provided by California Constitution, any city ordinance that regulates municipal affairs. What all of this means, right? What would have to change if we became a charter city? Well, that's for the citizens to decide, but we could actually change very little. We could maintain our city manager council form of government, but we would have the ability to collect this resource and be on par with the region. So on this slide, right now, we have a limit on the amount of documentary transfer tax that the city receives. And this is what is in this column, this, really the third column, under Emeryville, right? You can see how much documentary transfer tax we've collected from 2009 to 2014. So the average tax over six years there has yielded $157,000. To the right of this, you can see that whereas we get 55 cents for every thousand square feet, I think it is, right? Because the county actually takes half. It's a dollar ten that is charged, but we just get half of that, so 55 cents. By comparison, these charter cities that are around us, Alameda can charge $12, Albany $11.50, Berkeley and Oakland $15, Hayward charges $4.50, Piedmont $13, San Leandro $6. But you can see there the difference that it makes with a documentary transfer tax. And as part of a private real estate transaction, it's something that gets negotiated between the parties, right? Who is going to pay that tax? But you can see, for instance, if we charged, let's say, the rate of Alameda, because it's lower than Berkeley and Oakland, we always want to remain competitive here in Emeryville, right? So if we charged $12, that the average tax, right, the average possible tax would be over $3 million, right? So you can see that where we're earning $100,000, these other municipalities are getting millions of dollars from the documentary transfer tax. So this is something that I want us to consider. I think that if we want to continue to maintain excellent services, if we want to continue to build, this is a structural necessity, and it is something that helps us to keep pace with the municipalities around us. Of course, one of the things that's been mentioned is that we can't predict, for instance, when large parcels will be sold or mergers will occur, but that's not the goal of a transfer tax, right? A transfer tax doesn't trigger sales, and I don't believe it would inhibit sales, because so many of our neighbors have this exact same thing, right? So it acknowledges that the sale of real estate, the turnover in real estate in Emeryville is not only about a discreet transaction between two parties. It's how the city keeps up, right, with renewal and change throughout the city. This is about affordability, about maintaining sidewalks, building more parks, providing services, and making sure that there is an evenness across our neighborhoods in Emeryville. So how would it happen? A charter could be adopted if a majority of voters approve of the charter in an election, right? Or the city council can draft or charge a charter commission to draft a city charter and place the proposed charter on the ballot on its own initiative. And the citizens group can also do this through an initiative. A city charter can only be amended by a majority of voters. Amendments can be proposed by the city council or by ballot initiative and can determine any municipal affair. So subsequent changes would require a vote by the citizens. So in looking at these issues of affordability, and looking at the loss of redevelopment, this is a solution, right, a way forward that I'd really like the council and the people of Emeryville to consider. I think it's time. With that, I want to turn from my emphasis upon affordability to highlights from our other excellent departments in the city. Emeryville continues to contract with Alameda County for fire services. Our Emeryville Police Department, through November of 2013, Part 1 Crimes were down 3% compared to the same period last year. Robberies were down 27, burglaries down 21, and the increase was in the category of thefts. During the year, EPD has hired three new police officers and one new police service technician. They currently have three police officer openings. And I just want to say that when I'm out in the community, I hear consistent praise for our public safety departments. They're a real source of pride in the community. From the Public Works Department, some of the things that we have to look forward to, I know Vice Mayor Atkins is certainly looking forward to the Joseph Emory Skate Spot, and construction for that will begin in summer of 2014. There's a senior center renovation. Again, we're going to have a busy summer, summer of 2014. Sidewalk improvement program. If we want to make sure that there's an evenness across neighborhoods, I think this is one way to do it, to make sure that all of our neighborhoods are walkable, even the old-stock housing. The South Bayfront Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge, right now, the plans and specifications are nearly complete. The project's been on hold due to funding issues created with the loss of RDA, which, as you can see, ripples throughout the city. Once funding is cleared for use, negotiations will resume with the railroad, approvals will be sought, and the easements will be acquired from adjacent property owners. The Public Works Corporation Yard and Emergency Operations Center is undergoing a renovation, and the project will occur following an environmental remediation on the site. And then also, as was alluded to in the slides about the capital improvement program, the Peninsula Fire Station will be renovated, complete with tower lock replacement. We're looking at a rehabilitation of ECDC, the Child Development Center, that's scheduled for fiscal year '15 and '16. In terms of planning and building, we have recently completed projects: the Emery Station Greenway, Ambassador Housing, Bakery Lofts 4, Parkside Apartments is under construction along with 64th and Christie, and the Pack and Save renovations, I don't think are complete yet, but near there. Projects with planning approval and/or in plan check, the Emeryville Center for Community Life, the joint-use facility between the schools and the city, the Emery Station West Transit Center, which we'll be talking about this evening, 39th and Adeline, 3800 San Pablo, the Ma's Building, and the Shell Gas Station rebuild. You can see things are happening in Emeryville despite the loss of redevelopment building. It continues to happen. The Public Market, Phase 1B, Hyatt Place Hotel at Bay Street are projects in the planning entitlement process, along with the Nadye Site and 3706 San Pablo, an affordable housing So again, this shows the Emeryville Building Permit valuation by year, and we can see that in fiscal year '12 and '13, right, this uptick that even with the elimination of redevelopment building happens. So the economy right now, in several ways, is looking up. Retail sales and hotel revenues are up. Office vacancy is down to 15.2% in Emeryville. Residential sales are up, and prices are stabilizing. Unemployment is down to 6.1%, and the state has released some former redevelopment funds for our CIP project. And all of that good news, I think, is very good reason to think about a plan to draw people toward resources and to provide for more vulnerable populations in Emeryville. So I want a city for everyone. I'd like to increase affordability to working families through expansion of and subsidy for youth services, to work on increasing our affordable housing stock, and again, to draw people toward our resources and our community. Thank you. Okay, now for public comments.
Nice sleep, Tony. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Asher and council members. Bob Cantor, I'm the president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. Congratulations on that excellent presentation, and Sabrina as well. There's a lot going on in this town, and I'd better get with it here and find out. For those of you who didn't get enough of that presentation, you would like to see it again. We would like to invite you to attend our annual State of the City Luncheon, which originally was scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, the 22nd. It is not being held, for those of you who had not heard. We have rescheduled it, and I want to thank Mayor Asher and Sabrina for working with us on the new date. It has now been scheduled for Wednesday, March 12th. It'll still be at the Hilton Garden Inn, and that is confirmed. It'll be held on that date. Thank you very much. And you can give us an update from what happens from tonight to then. I just want to invite everybody... I just want to invite everybody to a couple other events going on in town. Next Tuesday evening, the 28th, we're having a little ribbon cutting and cantina party at Chevy's, which has joined the chamber on Powell Street, 5:30. You're all invited. It's free, and it's open to everybody. It's on our website. Please show up and help us welcome them to the Chamber of Commerce. And as some of you have already received the invitation, but let me invite everybody else, this coming Thursday evening, the 23rd, at 5:30, we're having our first business networking mixer of the year. It's also a ribbon cutting ceremony, welcoming the Stanford Children's Health Specialty Services Center, which is located now in Emeryville. They've been here for several months. The street address is 6121 Hollis Street, Suite Number 2. The actual entrance is really more on the Horton Street side facing the post office. That's at 5:30. There'll be a number of senior executives from Stanford coming. It's open to the public. We invite everyone. Please RSVP to let us know you're coming. Terry Paulding from Paulding and Company will be catering that event, and we're looking forward to having a very nice show. This is a real feather in Emeryville's cap to have this facility here. This is a state-of-the-art medical facility by any standards, and the fact that they've located here at the Heritage Square Building is a real feather in our cap, and we'd like to put on a good show for them. Some of you, I understand, cannot attend. You've let us know that, but thank you. We look forward to seeing you this Thursday evening, 5:30, if you can make that. Thanks so much, and congratulations again on a very nice presentation, Mayor and Sabrina too.
Thank you, Bob.
Madam Mayor, the city council staff, Joe Lutz, Watergate. I want to thank the TMA Board of Directors and the business community for including the Watergate stops in the base routing. This served not only our seniors and our disabled and our parents with children, but also the paying TMA members, particularly Watergate Market, which was adversely affected when those stops were gone. I particularly want to thank Jeff Sears and Rich Robbins. I've had many conversations with them, and they are very committed to transportation in the city, and they've kept all their commitments, and I'm very happy for that. I do want to say something. I saw your presentation, and I was a little bit surprised that there was nothing about transportation in that presentation. There's a lot about childcare and schools, and every resident here voted for two assessments for the schools, and these schools are not paying into the PBIT presently, so there's a little bit of a skew there. And the importance of transit in this city, we all agree on that, and I think the city needs to take a look in terms of how can we help and foster that, because even in terms of attracting people, one of the big attractions is this free transportation. So I think this, you know, as we go with this task force that, thank you Nora, and thank you Mayor Asher for being on there, as we go forward, that we need to take a look at that. The city needs to accept that they have part of responsibility for this mass transit here that we have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
That's equally resident. Congratulations, Mayor Asher. This is also about the Emery Ground. At the last TMA board meeting, staff recommended that the TMA send a letter to the city requesting the city to widen Powell Street for the turnaround at Watergate. And Jeff Sears, chairman of the TMA, asked the board members if they would consider an amendment to the letter committing to service to Watergate through the end of the PBIT, which presumes that the city moves forward with the turnaround at Admiral. And they voted, they did vote unanimously to amend the letter, as Chair Sears recommended. And then in a response to an email from me thanking Jeff for his support, he replied in part, "As you know from today's discussion, the TMA board thinks the city should revise the Admiral turnaround as soon as possible, regardless of what may or may not happen down the peninsula in the future." And he concluded that "since the Emery Ground is the last mile for so many riders, every minute of travel time makes an impact on riders' perception of its value and convenience." I just want to say that I agree with Jeff's comments. I hope the city will move forward in, you know, figuring out a way to widen the street to, you know, make an acceptable turnaround for the buses. And also, it would be useful to know, to have some feedback at some point as to what's happening on that. I mean, this is something that's gone on for a number of months now, and nobody really, I've heard things, I heard things at the beginning about possibilities that were being considered, but I haven't heard anything recently. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
I'm Buzz Cardoza, I'm a Watergate resident, and I would just like to encourage the city council and staff to proceed as quickly as possible to widen Powell Street for the bus turnaround. Thank you.
Okay, just a few comments. First, the city should certainly fix the sidewalk out there. I mean, every day that goes by that's not done, the bus has to go an extra five minutes and turn around. Joyce Jacobson had the right idea when she came here with the can of paint. The idea was just get out there and fix it. We can talk about all the other problems later. You know, people came here looking to the city council to have some assurance that they were going to have bus service, and the council didn't provide that assurance. The council said, "Well, it's up to the ETMA. We don't run the service." But you do adopt their budget, and you do levy assessments. So I would like to suggest that you request the ETMA to come back with a service policy in 60 days, that no service will be interrupted or stopped without the appropriate public hearing and the appropriate notes. I think it's a public policy that we really need to look at. And then there's the task force. Well, you ruled out a sales tax, and you ruled out assessment district, so you really only want to look at a PBIT. I mean, I think in deference to the people who are serving, you should keep all the options open. We're creating a ballot measure about it, and why not open it to all the ideas? Why would you want to close those ideas? You support a county tax, and you wouldn't support a local tax? We're giving Alameda County $3.5 million a year and getting about $500,000 back. If it goes to a penny, we'll be giving them $7 million a year. I mean, I think they can provide a lot of that funding for the Emery Ground. You know, you need a community meeting about the Emery Ground. Isn't it important enough? People want police fire, and the Emery Ground is the third thing they want. Let's have a community meeting and find out what everybody thinks about it. Let's not have just a task force meeting with limited number of people. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
I think we have a great opportunity here. We talk about housing, and I love all these numbers there, you know? And just like I discovered this $300 million giveaway by the Transportation Department to demolish the bridge, so if we make a bidding to the Transportation Department, we can get the bridge free, and we can get $300 million, and we don't need to demolish. We just need to bolt with it. We have plenty of money to bolt whatever we want to. And so this is an opportunity that perhaps we should explore, and maybe they'd be willing to save the bridge instead of going down to demolish the bridge. They say three years, but maybe it's going to take six years. And as you know, when people work, we never know when they finish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Anybody else for public comment this evening?
Move the consent calendar.
Could I just ask if staff wants this opportunity to update us and any of the speakers on the Powell Street project, if there is an update? I don't know if there is.
Sure.
For the Emery Ground turnaround.
Let you know that we have received the formal request from the TMA, and even before that, we'd been looking at, looking at a cost estimate and also really what it would take in order to accomplish this. We've done some preliminary modeling of, you know, what we would need to do, but what we want to, at this point, do is go out there with the bus drivers and actually talk to them about what their needs are. Right now, it's our understanding that they are indeed continuing sometimes to turn around at Admiral. They're just swinging wide into the crosswalk there. So at this point, we have received the request. We want to bring you all the information we can. We're going to work with the Public Works Director, and we have our next Public Works Committee meeting on February 13th, and our hope is to bring something at that time.
Good.
Thank you.
I'll second the...
Wait, first, we have the city manager's report. Item number four.
I'll try to be quick here. I have two things tonight, but first, I want to have two of our students from Expression College come up, and we are going to show a 60-minute video.
62nd?
I'm sorry, 60-second? Oh, gosh. It's going to be a long night. A 60-second, excuse me, video. These, I'll have them introduce themselves, and they, this was a school project that was a result of a meeting that Chris Cohn from Expression College and I had at Tube Mogul, one of our new media companies, and this was incorporated into their curriculum. And this is something that they did for us, and let me help you guys get it.
You introduce yourselves while I get ready.
Hello, my name's Kenneth. This is Sarah, and we're, oh, cool. So...
We're students at Expression College for Digital Arts, and we're in the Motion Graphics Program. We actually have another...
Can you talk to the microphone? Because we're actually broadcasting this.
Okay.
So you're going to have to face us.
Okay.
Camera will catch you from...
Okay. We're both in the Motion Graphics Program, and we actually have another teammate who's not here with us right now, and he's part of the film program. And our assignment was to create a commercial or a 60-second spot for pre-roll on internet videos to promote the city of Emeryville. And we've put together a 60-second spot, hopefully working with Tube Mogul to, you know, make this happen. But yeah.
Does it say anything else?
Yeah, and actually, everything in here, we collaborate with all of the small businesses around the city that makes Emeryville Emeryville, and hence, we call this project Be Emeryville. And we have worked closely with an artist in Emeryville, and he's been here for a long time. His name is Damon, and he made his own score or soundtrack for us. So, yeah, and yeah, please do enjoy. (music) Be efficient. Be enriched. Be engaged. Emeryville, California. Be here.
All right. Good. Thank you.
That's very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, in light of the governor's official proclamation of our drought, our state's drought, and the request for a voluntary 20% reduction of all of our residents, the city is looking at proactively, even though it is voluntary, we're looking at all of our internal consumption, and we'll be bringing a proposal or just, I guess, a summary at that February 13th Public Works Committee meeting of measures that we are recommending that the city take, either immediately or, you know, as we get closer to the summer. We will also be posting on our website and then issuing in the e-news some water-saving tips and working with East Bay Mud to get that out to our residents. So I just wanted to mention that. That's it.
Good, thank you. Now the consent calendar.
You have a motion and a second.
I want to, was anything pulled? I want to pull something.
We hadn't really gotten to it.
Okay. I want to pull 5.4.
Okay.
And also 5.14.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Get the motion and the second for that before...
Nora motioned, and her second is...
And I was second.
And I'd just like to say, 5.3, the action minutes, as amended. We had something in our dais about slightly changing what was in the minutes for the broken rack access fee.
Okay, thank you.
So as amended.
And I wanted to pull, I think, 5.9 is the one that I wanted to pull. Okay, so with that, Ruth, 5.4?
So 5.4, I just wanted to say that April 15th does pose a conflict for me. I know you continued that. I appreciate you continuing that from the December meeting. So I don't know what my colleagues would like to do, whether you want to have a special meeting or some other day, or how you want to handle that.
You know, I noticed that April has five Tuesdays, and was hoping that maybe the council would be fine with having a special meeting on April 22nd in lieu of April 15, because that would still give staff then two weeks before the next city council meeting.
That'd be great.
I'd move that change. So April 22nd rather than April 15?
Correct. Thank you, Jennifer.
Sure.
Okay. Do we need a second on that?
Yeah, that was seconded.
Oh, you seconded it?
Yeah.
All right. 5.4, okay, 5.9, I have to get to this in my notes very quickly. I think that was it, was it? Oh, no, that wasn't it. It was, I can't remember which one it was, but this traffic analysis. Oh, okay. Yes, this is for clarification. I'm going to ask for you to explain this, Charlie. In the staff report, it notes that with the construction of the marketplace, that 62nd Street will be a private plaza, construction of a portion of 63rd Street as a private street to serve the grocery store. I had a question from a resident about those being private streets. If you can just explain how that's actually going to work.
Okay. Well, the new streets and plazas in the Public Market project will be private in that the underlying fee, as it's known, would be privately owned, and the street and plaza would be privately maintained. However, the applicant has agreed to have public access easements in favor of the city mapped on the streets and plazas, meaning that the public will have access to them 24/7 and can exercise the same First Amendment rights that they can exercise on any other street. So in that sense, they will be public streets.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Can I ask, is that also true of the sidewalks?
Yes, that includes the sidewalks.
Okay. And with that, I move 5.9.
Second.
Okay. 5.14, Ruth?
We heard some public comments tonight around work recently done on the Powell Street out on the peninsula. I just wanted to take this agenda item, because that work that we've done so far is complete about opening up and maybe putting on a future agenda, the issue at Admiral in terms of a turnaround. So I'm just asking that that be put on a future agenda. So with that, I'll move this item.
Second. Okay, consensus on that? All right. Okay, so with that, we're on to item 6. Let me get to this. Item 6.1, a public hearing for the Emory Station West at the Emeryville Transit Center Heritage Square Garage, and this is from Hollis.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So this evening, the city council will be considering three agreements related to the Transit Center, a funding agreement, a remediation agreement, and a development agreement. And to, as background, just to orient everyone here, the Transit Center involves two property sites. One is a 1.5-acre mound site, which is directly north of the Amtrak station. That's owned by CBS, a successor company of Westinghouse Corporation, and it's subject to a long-term lease held by Wareham Development and was subleased to the redevelopment agency. There's the 1.1-acre Heritage Square Surface Parking Lot to the north, which is owned by Wareham Development. Focusing on the mound site, the previous use on this site was by Westinghouse. So, in that sense, they will be public streets.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Can I ask, is that also true of the sidewalks?
Yes, that includes the sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay, and with that, I move 5.9.
Second.
Okay. 5.14, Ruth?
We heard some public comments tonight around work recently done on the Powell Street out on the Peninsula. I just wanted to take this agenda item, because that work that we've done so far is complete about opening up and maybe putting on a future agenda, the issue at Admiral in terms of a turnaround. So I'm just asking that that be put on a future agenda. So with that, I'll move this item.
Second. Okay. Consensus on that? All right. Okay, so with that, we're on to item six. Item 6.1. A public hearing for the Emery Station West at the Emeryville Transit Center Heritage Square Garage, and this is from Helen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So this evening, the city council will be considering three agreements related to the Transit Center: a funding agreement, a remediation agreement, and a development agreement. And to, as background, just to orient everyone here, the Transit Center involves two property sites. One is a 1.5-acre mound site, which is directly north of the Amtrak station. That's owned by CBS, a successor company of Westinghouse Corporation, and it's subject to a long-term lease held by Wareham Development and was subleased to the Redevelopment Agency. There's the 1.1-acre Heritage Square surface parking lot to the north, which is owned by Wareham Development. Focusing on the mound site, the previous use on this site was by Westinghouse. These photographs down here show the Westinghouse facility when it was being demolished and when it was closed. And Westinghouse used it for the maintenance and repair of electrical devices such as transformers, which contained PCBs. Because of the PCBs on the site, in 1985, the Environmental Protection Agency issued a consent agreement that required Westinghouse to place the contaminated soils within a slurry cutoff trench sealed with an engineered cap and limited the future use of the mound parcel to surface parking. Also, this consent agreement allows CBS to maintain this engineered hazardous waste dump, essentially that's what it is, in the center of the city indefinitely. So, as first identified in the 1999 Redevelopment Agency, 1995 Redevelopment Agency Implementation Plan, the city's vision was to really remediate the site and to redevelop it as a high-density intermodal transit-oriented public-private development. In September 2005, the Redevelopment Agency entered into an exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Wareham Development that expired in October 2009 and couldn't be extended because of the dissolution of redevelopment. Wareham Development moved forward with the design of the project and submitted a design for the Emery Station West Transit Center project to the city, and the city council approved the designer view and use permit on February 16, 2010, and extended that permit to February 16, 2014, in February 2012. According to our ordinance, the city council may extend project approvals for up to five years from the original date, or February 16, 2015. So, the Emery Station West project consists of the two properties I already identified. On the mound site would be developed Emery Station West, which is a public-private mixed-use development, 248,000 gross square feet of office, laboratory space, and seven stories on top of a two-story parking transit podium. There'd also be 2,400 square feet of ground-level active space with retail and transit-oriented functions. In the parking podium, and the plans are down here, there'd be 125 public parking spaces and 23 private parking spaces, and at least four bus space serving Amtrak. So these show the bus space right here, and these are the railroad tracks down here. This is a rendering of the Heritage Square parking structure. It's a seven-level parking garage, has all private parking spaces in it, 675 that will serve the Heritage Square and the commercial space in Emery Station West. And there's 3,600 square feet of active commercial uses fronting Horton Street in this project. The project also includes improvements to the Amtrak station and public plaza, widening of the platform in front of the Emery Station West project, and improvement of the plaza between the Amtrak station and the Emery West project, which is shown in this plan right here. The improved plaza also includes an improved connection to the pedestrian bridge. There's a rebuilt stairway you kind of see right here at the ground level, and then at the second floor, there's access from a garden on the top of the podium, which is publicly accessible as well. So we moved ahead with environmental remediation planning for the site. A final feasibility study and remedial action plan was approved in April 19, 2010, and that identified a host of environmental contaminants on that site. In addition to PCBs, there's volatile organic compounds and semi-volatile organic compounds, and all of these other items you can see listed here. And following from that, there was a final remedial design and implementation plan, which sets forth the specifications for actually implementing the FS RAP. That was completed January 21, 2011. These have both been approved by the EPA and DTSC, and the last approval was February 11, 2011. The remediation plan in these plans is based on a risk-based remedial approach, and the excavation is to approximately nine and a half feet below ground surface, and installation of sub-slab venting system to mitigate residual volatile contaminants. The slurry wall will continue to function, and the building foundation will be constructed to create an impermeable surface equivalent to the existing cap. And the estimated costs range from $6.8 million to $9.1 million. And if you have more questions about the remediation specifically, at the end of my presentation, our consultant, Earl James from EKI, who prepared the FS RAP report, is here, and he can answer any more detailed questions about remediation. So now I'm gonna move into and give you an overview of the agreements that are before you. There's basically three agreements. The first is the Agreement for Public Improvement Funding and Public Parking Lease and Option to Acquire Easement Agreement. We're gonna call that the Funding Agreement. The second agreement is the Amended and Restated Environmental Remediation and ESCRO Agreement, and the third is the Development Agreement. So going to the Funding Agreement. The Funding Agreement covers the conditions related to the funding of grants that the city's obtained for the project, the successor agency funding that is pledged to the project, the public parking 12-year lease that will be providing funding to offset the cost of remediation, and it also includes a permanent easement agreement after, for when the lease expires. So overall, the conditions precedent to the effectiveness of the Funding Agreement are that before June 30th of this year, the developer, CBS, and the city must have executed the remediation agreement, and the developer and CBS must have executed a transfer agreement, which essentially shifts ownership of the site to the developer. The existing parking sublease on the site, which is the, essentially, this sublease, that's the successor agency sublease at this time, is suspended during remediation and construction, and the developer has five years from the date of the agreement to complete remediation or is required to reinstall the surface parking. During remediation and construction, the developer is required to provide temporary parking, provide 125 temporary replacement parking spaces. That is pursuant to the Temporary Parking License Agreement, which is an attachment to the Funding Agreement, and those temporary parking spaces be at the terraces. The Funding Agreement outlines how the different grant agreements would be funded. So first, with the STIP funding, that's $4.2 million from the State Transportation Improvement Program. It's a grant that the city's received for public parking and bus bays. The developer will comply with all of the state grants' requirements, and the city and developer will also work together to obtain an extension of the June 30, 2015 grant deadline. We have another grant of $836,000 from the Federal Highway Administration for either the public plaza or platform improvements. So the developer must elect to use these funds no later than two years after commencing construction. Otherwise, they would be available to the city, but only for some improvements related to the Amtrak public plaza or train platform. Then there's the successor agency funding. That's $4,230,952 for public parking and bus bays, which has been subject to the city's successor agency Transit Center Public Parking Funding and Sublease Assignment Agreement, which was executed June 26, 2012. And this is the agreement that is in ongoing litigation with the state of California. And right now, as we understand, the Court of Appeal is expected to give us a decision on that agreement before the end of the calendar year. Those funds are in escrow pending a final decision. But it's important to understand that these funds cannot be used on another project. They're subject to the June 26 agreement, enforceable obligation. If the city loses the litigation, the funds would be distributed to all taxing entities. So in the Funding Agreement, the conditions precedent to using the successor agency funding are listed here. The remediation needs to be completed, and the developer has to have title to the property. The litigation needs to have been favorably resolved. The construction of the podium has to have commenced by the deadline that's in the Transit Center Public Parking Funding and Sublease Assignment Agreement, which is January 1, 2015. However, that deadline could be extended because of delay caused by the litigation. And the public parking lease needs to have been executed. So moving on to the lease. On November 6, 2012, the city council, you directed us to negotiate an agreement that used the maximum of 12 years of city property tax revenues from the project to offset the cost of remediation. And so the funding mechanism we're using here is a parking lease. So the lease term, not the rent necessarily, I'll talk about that in a second, but first, it's important to understand the lease term. It's 12 years, but an additional, there's an additional seven years for possible delay of construction of the private improvements after the podium is completed, because the developer could go in, build the podium improvements, and included all of the public improvements, and then wait until the market was right to build the private portion of the project. So we have terms to protect ourselves from that situation. So, if the developer constructs the entire project at once, the lease commences upon completion of the entire project. The rent would be equal to the city's share of property tax from Emery Station West and the Heritage Square parking garage for the 12 years. If private improvements are delayed, the lease will commence upon completion of the podium, so the lease term starts there, but the rent would only be $1 a year until the earlier of seven years after execution of the lease or completion of construction of the private improvements. So once those milestones are reached, then the 12-year period starts, and so then the for the reigning 12-year term, the rent would be equal to property tax. During the lease, the developer is responsible for the operation and maintenance of public parking and bus bays, and the city would be obligated to charge a marking rent for the parking, and that would be agreed to between the city and the developer. The Amtrak patrons, however, do have the right to park there for free, as they do now. Any funds the city receives from parking fees would be remitted to the developer. So after the lease is over, that's when the permanent easement is exercised, and at that time, the developer still is responsible for operation and maintenance of the parking spaces and bus space, but the city would pay its proportionate share of those costs to the developer, and that would be agreed to as part of an annual budget process. And the city could choose whether or not to charge fees for the public spaces and would retain all the revenues. So that's the Funding Agreement. Now I'm gonna move on to the Amended and Restated Environmental Remediation and ESCRO Agreement. This is a three-way agreement between CBS, Wareham Development, and the city, and it sets forth the mutual responsibilities of CBS and Wareham Development in remediating the site. The city's obligation under the agreement is that, once the remediation project is completed, the city releases and covenants not to sue CBS for further investigation, cleanup, removal action, remediation, or monitoring of any hazardous materials remaining on the site. However, it's important to point out that the covenant is not applicable to any hazardous materials on the site that are subsequently identified by the U.S. EPA or DTSC. It only relates to the hazardous materials that are known at the present time. So this agreement is important because it provides an incentive for CBS to proceed with the further remediation of the site and essentially participate in this transaction, because it protects them from certain liability they see from the city. So now, moving on to the Development Agreement. The Development Agreement provides vested rights to build a project based on the existing approvals for five years, and it would expire in 2018. At that time, the developer would pay the then-applicable building fees when they pull the permits. It allows for the resolution of the ongoing litigation with the Department of Finance. It gives time for that to be worked out and to secure the Redevelopment Agency funding for the project. So, in order to approve the Development Agreement, there has to be two findings. First, it needs to be consistent with the general plan, and it's consistent with the general plan for these reasons. It adds laboratory, office, ground-level, commercial, transit-oriented uses to create a mix of uses that strengthen the economic base. It's a goal in the general plan, as identified here. It also supports transit uses through bus bays and public parking, pedestrian plaza. It increases the platform area and enhances the pedestrian-bike-bridge connection, and that's also the general plan policy identified here. The next finding is that it needs to be in the public interest, and it is in the public interest because this project remediates the mound site, it improves intermodal connectivity by providing public parking structure and bus bays, you have an improved transit plaza, there's an improved connection to the pedestrian-bicycle bridge, and that, also that creation of the podium-level landscape plaza area. So these photographs here show you what the situation currently is, and I think it's pretty evident the need for improvement. So, the Planning Commission considered the Development Agreement October 24, 2013. Six commissioners were present, two voted in favor, two voted opposed, and two abstained. So no recommendation is forwarded to the city council tonight, since the abstentions do not count toward the vote. So to summarize the financial considerations on these transactions, the city is contributing 12 years of the project's future property tax revenue to offset the cost of site remediation, and we've estimated that to be approximately $2.7 million on a net present value basis. The city is providing $8.5 million in state and federal grants and successor agency funds to offset the costs of public parking and bus bays and public plaza improvements. And the project generates future property tax revenues after the 12-year lease term, so it will save 100% of the property tax from the project at that time, estimated to be $329,000 in year 13, and that would increase 2% annually. In addition, these agreements leverage state, federal, and successor agency and city funds to remediate the site and improve and expand public facilities. The actual cost of remediation and building the public facilities is more than what the city would be contributing. The state grant and successor agency funds are also project-specific, and the funding is lost if it's not used on this Transit Center project. And the agreements also reduce risk to the city for the construction of the public improvements because the developer's committing to assume all the risk for cost overruns. To summarize the project benefits, resulting in remediating the mound site, creating improved parking and bus bays, a renovated, expanded public plaza, and improved pedestrian-bicycle bridge connection across the railroad. Overall, the intermodal transit connections are improved and we're strengthening the city's economic vitality through the expansion of its bioscience cluster. So lastly, our recommendation is that you approve the Agreement for Public Improvement Funding that provides financial assistance to the project. You approve the Amended and Restated Environmental Remediation and ESCRO Agreement that provides CBS with protections it requires in order to move forward, and approve the Development Agreement to secure existing project entitlements to allow for the resolution of pending litigation. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Do you want to open the public hearing first?
Could we hear from the public first?
Okay. You'd like to hear from the public?
First thing I want to say is this should be called the Automotive Project instead of the Transit Center. You know, when I agreed to put money into this, it was with the understanding that all the toxicity was going to be removed from the site. I had no idea it would only be just a top level. I mean, to let CBS off the hook for all that toxic waste that exists under there, suppose you have an earthquake and that's released. Why would they be released? Why would they be released? I just can't understand why you would release CBS. You know, and the public parking that's going to be there, that should be granted. The city should have that forever. That parking should be granted to the city. With all the money we put into this project, that's the very minimum we should get out of it. I mean, you know, I mean, I'm really disturbed that that toxicity is still going to be there, and we're paying all this money. You know, I don't even think the developer wanted to do this project. Nobody would touch it, but the city manager wanted it done. City manager went to Wareham to get this project done, and that's how it started. I don't know, I just don't think CBS should be let off the hook, and I'm concerned about our liability. You know, is there any provision for the Emery Ground in this station? I mean, you know, we may expand it, we may do different things. It shouldn't just be, you know, for... And then those buses that go to San Francisco, we need to find a way to allow people who get on those buses so they can go to San Francisco. I mean, anyway, I have a lot of questions about this project, but thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council. I'm Jeff Sears with Wareham Development. Since we're the applicant, I'm hoping I can have a couple more minutes than three, but I'm going to use your time very efficiently. This project, we think, is as important to Emeryville as San Francisco's new transbay terminal is to them. And it provides a lot of the same benefits in similar ways as that project, specifically a private component that helps build and expand an existing transit benefit to that city. It's a project that's been approved by two prior city councils. Unfortunately, the state's quandary with its financial condition over the last four or five years, part of which led to the disassembling of redevelopment, has made us, and working closely with city staff, try to put the pieces of the project back together to keep it alive and sustain what we think are really material public benefits that it brings. And so I think what Helen, I think, did a good job of outlining are how we've put those pieces back together in a way that can make this project possible. I think few would have foreseen the real success that the existing Amtrak station would have back in the mid-'90s, when Wareham and the city first decided to pursue a public-private partnership for it. And I think the successes everyone believes have been great, substantial, and more than anticipated. This project helps build on those. Last year, the Capitol Corridor set a new record with over 1.75 million passengers riding on it. Again, this project allows that growth and the opportunity for other transit methods to serve Emeryville, both people moving in and out and in-between. It will double the amount of space devoted to the connectivity to the trains, buses, cabs, cars. Because by putting the bus bays in that ground level of the podium, right next to the tracks where the Capitol Corridor really wants them to be, all the area in front of the station where the buses are today is now available for other connectivity. And like I say today, that's vans, cabs, there's a car-share pod that operates on the site. Maybe in 10 years, there'll be other ways of connecting. The existing platform will be widened. I mentioned that the connection from the trains to the buses being directly is a key thing that Amtrak and Capitol Corridor has wanted to accomplish. The connectivity with bicycles as a means of first or last mile will be improved. The Capitol Corridor, in its recent survey, found that 10% of its riders connect with bicycles. And they've taken steps such as improving and expanding the facilities for bicycles on their trains. They actually have room for segways on their trains. Now, I don't see a lot of those today, but the point is, there are lots of ways to do that first and last mile. We're seeing more and more. So we think this project will address ones we know about, but also will have some opportunity to address the future by just having a more large real estate piece devoted to that connectivity. As Mr. Lutz mentioned earlier, and the mayor mentioned in her discussion on the state of the city, we think transit is really important for...
Mr. Sears, can you please wrap it up? Because I don't want to get into extending time for some people.
Okay, all right.
But I also imagine that if the council has questions, that they'll be able to address you as well.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, so I'll try to do it quickly. Clearly, transit is a direct relationship to quality of life in a livable city, which is part of the tenets of the general plan. Helen mentioned that effectively, the EPA has, with its grant decree, allowed CBS to have a toxic waste dump here. And so making a deal that encourages them to allow the abatement is really essential. Helen also mentioned that the public funds, mostly from other people, are only available to this project, and she said they don't cover the whole cost, effectively both with the abatement and with the bus bays and the parking.
Thank you.
Our private funds will be paying roughly half of that cost.
It starts before I start talking, I guess. Well, I'm kind of surprised to hear Mr. Sears and Mr. Robbins, who is the CEO of Wareham here, talking so fondly about bicycle transit. Because you may remember, Mr. Robbins himself approached this body several years ago and asked you to remove the Horton Street Bike Boulevard, just get rid of it entirely, and he wanted to shunt the bikes over by the railroad tracks, presumably because bicycles were crapping his Transit Center project and the other projects in the area. So it's funny now to see, now they suddenly really like bikes, whereas before, they were none too fond of bicycling. Further, as you know, we have a bicycle boulevard on the street, and so this project is going to put 850 parking spots on a bicycle boulevard, so generating hundreds of automobile trips a day on a bicycle boulevard, which is only allowed to have 3,000 vehicle trips per day, as you know. So that's sure to be a conflict with bicycling, which they haven't mentioned strangely. I think Mr. Bukowski, when he called it an automotive center more fairly than Transit Center, is actually a fair assessment. With the four bus bays, that's what we're getting, four bus bays, it's more aptly, it should be called an automotive center, and that's what you're being asked to give public money to here tonight. And I think it's really bad public policy. This project will not clean up the toxins, as we know. Right now, the toxins are entombed, cannot migrate, the EPA tells us that. And when this project is finished with all this public money, it will still be entombed and can't migrate. The difference is, right now, we're making no money off that site, and when this project is finished, we'll also make no money for 13 years, and then we'll make some pittance, as Ms. Asher showed us in her State of the City presentation. The Upper Plaza proposed will not be used, and you can tell that because the existing Upper Plaza that Mr. Robbins built across the street is empty. I've been there many times, I've never seen a soul there, ever, other than security guards. Never seen a soul in the Upper Plaza, Elevated Plaza. So that's a red herring, where there's going to be no use there, that's not a public benefit. Your planning commission, your hand-selected planning commission, has told you now twice that there's not enough public benefit for this project. We're giving public money, many millions of dollars of our money, to this project, and your planning commission has twice told you that there's not enough public benefit. Now, Ms. Bean here was loathe to say that they voted no to the project, but in fact, it was a no vote. The planning commission voted twice no to this project, so I think you should take that into serious consideration. I'm going to speak just for a little bit longer, as the other speaker did.
Please wrap it up.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, here. One last concern I wanted to say. If you ask Mr. Robbins now about his other projects, you'll note that many of his buildings are sitting idle, half-used, some not used at all. So I'm really concerned that he wants to build another project like this when his existing projects aren't being fully utilized, and I'm afraid what he's trying to do perhaps is sell entitlements. In other words, get permission and then sell the entitlements to another developer. And I think we should hold out for another developer, this is not a Transit Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Bob Cantor. I'm the president, CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. We sent you a communication late this afternoon. I hope some of you had a chance to see it. If not, I'll just summarize it very briefly. It was an email correspondence, roughly 3:30 this afternoon. I will not repeat it here, I'll just summarize it very briefly. Number one, the two main reasons why we agree, why we think this is a good deal, besides the fact that it's been languishing for quite some time and it's time for action. Number one, it does address the cleanup, there's a very complex, I think, funding formula to get that done. And as has been documented by Helen, you stand the risk of losing some of that funding if we don't act. The second reason is regarding the economic benefits, we say once again, we don't believe they've been fully presented to you. I haven't heard anyone mention this evening, except for some of the things that Helen said. When you have a large project, it's 248,000-plus square feet, and then the parking garage, this not has been mentioned about, property tax hasn't been mentioned, sales tax revenue, business license tax revenue, Measure A revenue for the schools, 15 cents a square foot on a 248,000-square-foot building, not counting the parking garage, money for the P-bid for the Emery Ground, generated for the P-bid taxes, not to mention business license taxes, utility user taxes, none of this has been presented to you tonight, art in public places. So it benefits either our school district, I understand Measure A goes to the schools, not to the city, but it benefits the school district. The P-bid money goes to benefit the Emery Ground, which benefits transit, art in public places, utility users' tax revenue, which goes directly to you, that's just a check sent to you, it's unencumbered general fund money, as is sales tax and business license tax revenue. That has not been discussed tonight. So there's significant economic benefits to this building besides what's been presented tonight. It's been languishing for quite some time, you've been bombarded with material and data over the years, so as the planning commission, it's time for action. And as we've discussed with you on a one-on-one basis, I've had meetings with you about a book that we are fans of at the chamber. As we now know, we can't count on our federal nor our state government to take our economic dust in our hands, we have to do it ourselves. Cities are going to have to do this, especially in the post-redevelopment era. This is an opportunity to do that. We urge you to take action tonight and approve this project. Thanks so much.
There is one thing that bothers me the most. This is the agreement that you cannot sue. And, I mean, what does your husband think about it? He teaches law, no? So, I mean, if you cannot sue because something goes wrong for whatever reason, I mean, there is something really wrong. I mean, I cannot buy that. And then, I think I know what I'm talking about, I did my thesis on pollution, so you're not going to teach me anything about it. And so if the thing is not the gap, or if not remediation that is reliable, I mean, what do you think, Mr. Biddo? Here we have a real problem here, and just for that reason, I would say no, I would postpone. And also, the other thing is, also bothers me, we have Mr. Cordova, who always voted yes for anything, because he's a developer. We should eliminate people like that. I mean, this is really a biased yes vote. This is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Any other public comment? No? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll have council discussion. Questions?
I actually would like to have somebody come up and explain the remediation, because at one time, I thought it was all going to be removed, and now I think there's a change in plans. So somebody could clarify that point for me, and also understand what conditions will the city be left with if we do it this way? Because I think that's a concern that we all share.
Earl James with EKI.
Earl, do you want to put in your...
I could. I suppose there's a slide or two in there that might...
Yeah.
Well, a lot of what Helen did kind of covered the basic... If I plug this into this Logitech thing, will it... It's a PowerPoint?
Yes. You identify yourself?
Yes.
Just be on your nose.
Anyway, I'll start talking, and maybe we'll get some graphics, maybe we won't. Earl James with Earl and Kalinowski. We prepared, under contract to the former redevelopment agency, this document, which is the FS RAP. It was a result of a lot of work with the U.S. EPA, Department of Toxic Substance Control, and representatives of CBS and Wareham. And...
Daniel.
I was paid by the redevelopment agency.
Thank you.
Which is yours?
Yeah, no, it's the...
This one?
Yeah.
Could you just move your microphone up a little bit? You're taller than...
Thank you. Okay. I think you've seen this slide. In terms of remediation and what this site represents, I mean, this is a classic brownfield in the sense that it's a site that is stalled for redevelopment in the midst of an area that has been wonderfully redeveloped with office buildings and the Amtrak station and so forth. The history of it, that entire block where Emery Station Number Two, Emery Station Number One, that was all part of the former Westinghouse facility. The remediation that is currently proposed will... And now I got to figure out how to change slides here. Let's go to slide four. This shows the current condition of the site and the outlines of the parking lot. You can see the locations where investigations have been conducted by consultants for Westinghouse, CBS, and EKI on behalf of the city are shown on this map. The thin contour lines that sort of circle around the center of the site are the current elevation of the site, with the mound that was created by the cap that currently covers the contamination, kind of represented by those curving lines through the middle. The heavier gray line around the outside is the slurry wall, which was, it's a mud wall, basically, that was dug to contain the area where these polychlorinated bifennals, PCBs, and the many other contaminants that are there are located. So currently, the plan is to... There was some additional soil sampling that was part of the plan that was conducted that's been completed, and then to do soil excavation to an elevation of approximately nine and a half feet above sea level. And that's removing the cap and several feet of the soils that are contaminated below the cap. That is going to accomplish the removal of a significant portion of the contamination by taking that off. Because what happened when they constructed the cap was they took some other contaminated soils that were around, they piled them inside the slurry wall on the top there, and then built the cap over the top. So this remediation is going to accomplish a very good thing of taking some of the highest levels of the PCB contamination off the site, out of your city, and have installed on top of it a more permanent cap in the form of the building and the foundations for the building, facilities that are more impermeable than the current cap is in many ways. There also will be some excavation of additional areas where there are very high concentrations of PCBs in the soil at these locations. And we're talking numbers that get up to like 24,000 milligrams per kilogram or parts per million of PCBs in soil. So these are areas of extremely high contamination, and they'll be removed also as part of the remediation. The other aspect of it that's been talked about is the in-situ treatment of groundwater, where before the construction is conducted, there'll be injection of an oxidant to knock down the concentrations of chlorinated volatile organic compounds. And these are the kind of things that can leak out even with the cap that's on there now, because they're volatile. And another advantage of the project and the proposed development is that the new building will have a vapor control system built into it to capture these and discharge them in the appropriate manner to the atmosphere. the appropriate manner to the atmosphere. So these volatile organic compounds are both going to get treated onsite by this injection that will take place before the development gets put on, and by treatment of the air from beneath the building. And these are the other aspects of the, of the project. There'll be a barrier at the bottom of the excavation to protect the workers that are going to be working on it. The slurry wall will continue to function, and it's got now a decades-long history of containing the PCBs that are there. PCBs are not a chemical that move readily in the environment, except sort of physically, they're not, they don't migrate in groundwater, for instance. So the slurry wall was, at a certain level, kind of insurance against that. And then there are various institutional controls that are, have to do with the way various aspects of the site are handled. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think so. But can we go back to that one slide? The one before where you had the different areas?
That one?
Yeah. And these work areas that are in these hatch. So you can go down and remove all of the PCBs in those areas? Are those?
Yes. Those are additional excavations. And there'll be other areas of deeper excavations that will be conducted for elevator shafts and pile caps and grade beams and things that are part of the construction of the building. So there's the one level, and then below that, there's hotspots that are getting taken out for PCBs and other areas where elevator shafts and various things are going to be.
So they'll still be, so all the hotspots, as you said, will be removed? Or will, what will be?
There are still some elevated concentrations of PCBs that will remain on the site, and there will still be various of the other contaminants that are related to it. They'll be inside the slurry wall and capped by the structure that's put at the bottom of the excavation and then the foundations of the building.
So these, these PCBs aren't really leaching any deeper? Or?
No. No. They found the sort of, the full depth of them has been explored and evaluated.
Okay.
And they kind of sank, they were released in various ways up at the surface. They sank down to a certain level, and the slurry wall is built below that level.
Okay.
And they're held in place there.
So there's no concern about the groundwater?
No.
No. And how deep would we have to go to remove it all?
It's another 15 feet or so, 15, 20 feet. One of the alternatives that we looked at was that there was a below grade or below grade parking. There are a section of below-grade parking, which would take out a lot of that if that were to be constructed. But it's, it's a difficult project to do, to take out those deeper levels. Extremely expensive. And, you know, it's, it's been secure the way that it's been constructed for a couple of decades, the way it sits now. So I think there's a combination in the current plan of taking out some of those highest concentrations that are closest to the surface, taking care in a way of breaking down the volatile organic compounds that are there with the injections, and then maintaining the containment that's there that's been proven to be effective for a long time.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Earl. I'm a little confused here. When you talk about, you're removing the top 10 feet?
Not quite.
Nine and a half?
Going to an elevation of nine and a half. And the top elevation of the mound is about 16, 17 feet. So it's about seven, eight feet at sort of the peak of the mound, down to an elevation of nine and a half, plus some deeper spots below that.
Well, the sea level there is about, what, 20, 22 feet down?
Below the ground surface.
So you're really not talking about going down, having, leaving toxics in there for, you know, a large amount of space. Because before you get too far, you're going to hit sea level.
Yeah, there's, there's another 10 or 15 feet of contaminated soil.
I don't think it's 15.
Below what's going to be dug out. And I have not looked at the cross-sections in a bit.
That elevation is 22 feet right there.
Okay.
So, so the question that I have, you know, in, when you compare those things, is there any estimate at all as to what amount of toxics would be left or the nature of the toxics? Have, has any testing been done on that?
Yes, it's been.
Could you elucidate on that?
Well, we, let me go back to another slide here and show you, look again at the slide where we have all of the sampling locations. So each one of these little dots with a number next to it is a place where some sort of boring or probe has been put into the ground, soil or groundwater or both, or vapors have been collected at those locations. And sort of the three-dimensional distributions of those chemicals is as well-known as it is at any site that we work with. You know, you don't know every ounce of soil that's there, but this is the way it's done, and that's a very extensive level of investigation that's been conducted to know what's down there.
So then, would you be able to tell us if the, the most concentration of the toxics is in the top 10 feet of the soil?
Some of the very highest concentrations are in that top portion that's going to get taken off the site.
Have you found in any of these hotspots, high concentrations in the lower 20?
There are some higher concentrations. There's a couple of what I think of as kind of pipes.
Right.
Where, one story that I heard is, and you can see on air photos, there were tank cars that went out there and, and they would empty tank or empty transformers sort of down. So there are a couple of pipes where the high concentrations go down. They're small areas. The tops of those are going to get taken off in the excavations and at some of those squares where the deeper excavations are.
Okay, thank you, Earl.
Jennifer? Can I just follow up on, on a few of what you've mentioned? So it looks like from your legend here, the sampling was done in 2002 and 2004, and there's been groundwater monitoring. But what kind of sampling do you have over the last 10 years of, I mean, you said the slurry wall is containing it, and I'm curious how, how you know that?
There's groundwater monitoring that goes on that is conducted by CBS. There's also a lot of groundwater monitoring on the other side of the railroad tracks that goes on. So I mean, Emeryville, with its industrial history, has a lot of monitoring roles around. So chemicals that are moving around show up in one network or another. And this, it's well documented that the slurry wall has been effective at containing what's there for the decades that it has been installed. I haven't looked, but I know there's ongoing quarterly annual groundwater monitoring going on at the site.
And the other things you said are not in the groundwater, you said PCBs are not in the groundwater?
Correct. So they're just sitting there in soil.
So you know that they haven't moved?
Right.
And how, how do you know that from?
Well, and I wouldn't know. I mean, I can't.
I wouldn't know, but I'm asking how you know.
But they're not, you know, people have studied very extensively the sort of chemical nature of PCBs and how they react in the environment. And there are many sites similar to this. Westinghouse has released quite a large volume of PCBs into the environment and spent a lot of money investigating how they behave so that they can understand, along with EPA and DTSC, how to deal with them when they're found. So there's a lot of information that would say that these are, kind of where they get released is where they stay.
Okay. Did you at one point have a plan to clean this site further than the current plan?
We evaluated a couple of different, what they're called, alternatives in this document. They're all written up in there and kind of compared in terms of effectiveness and cost and the ability to implement them. So we did evaluate other approaches to it, to some degree, working with various ideas of how the site might get redeveloped.
And in terms of the area around it that you commented on, that's already been redeveloped, how does this cleanup plan, because I was on the council at that time when those were approved, how does this cleanup plan compare to the sites nearby? Or alternatively, how is it different?
Well, it's really the same approach as all of the major sites in Emeryville have had. It's risk-based, so there are extensive calculations of what the human health risks are, both to people who are going to future might use and be around the site, to the workers who are going to be doing the kind of construction of the site. And all of the sites around here have some remnant of the contamination. And the cleanups are done in ways that allow the redevelopment to occur and limit the ongoing damage to the environment. And this is right in line with all of those, and it's following all the same guidance. And, you know, they all have what we call fat books that document all the investigation and all the analysis, and this site is right in line with all those.
So this one's not worse than the other ones around it were?
Uh, no.
And the reason it's been capped and used as a surface parking lot instead of being developed is not related to what's in the soil?
Nope. It, it's really a, it's a financial thing. You know, it's a brownfield where it could get cleaned up, and it can get cleaned up with the appropriate sort of business structure around it. And that's why all the other ones have gotten cleaned up as well, through one mechanism or another.
And this kind of follows on Councilmember Davis's question, but what's, what's left after the excavation? And I understand now, it's not excavating nine and a half feet down, you're excavating two nine and a half feet above sea level.
Correct.
That's the nine and a half.
Correct.
So we, it's a little different than what we heard earlier. But what's left underneath?
What's left are the same chemicals that Helen had in her list of the PCBs, chlorobenzines, the chlorinated volatile organic compounds. They will be there. The chlorinated volatile organic compounds, and I believe some of the chlorobenzines, will be broken down to one degree or another by the injection of the oxidants. And some of the very highest concentrations of the PCBs will be removed, some of them in limited areas below the footprint of the building will remain behind the slurry wall.
And under the foundation?
And under the foundation.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before you did your study, I heard from another, and there were only two of us on the council who are still here tonight, but I, I heard something that disturbed me a dozen years ago, which is that the nature of the slurry wall was measured in terms of viscosity. And to me, that implies permeability. And while that was acceptable, the slurry wall was built only with the PCBs in mind, which as you've indicated are pretty static contaminants. You've also acknowledged that there are things that can get through the slurry wall, such as VOCs and some of the other things that are in there. So the fact that the slurry wall would, would remain in a, in a technology that was maybe fine for the time that it was done, certainly would not be used today. And this is a, once in a multi-generational opportunity to, to do the job right in terms of the remediation that has to happen there. So the fact that the slurry wall, which is measured in terms of viscosity, is still remaining with a outmoded technology, while that might be fine for the most stable contaminant, it isn't okay for the VOCs. So my question to you is what percent of contaminants will remain that are not being excavated? You said most will be removed, but is that 80%? Is it 60%? Is it 51%? What's going to remain that, because it's below the level of the dig?
You know, I have not calculated what the remaining percentages might be. We have made various calculations of what the sort of exposure point concentrations, there are various terms and ways that, that these chemicals concentrations are calculated to use in the risk-based assessments. And those calculations say that doing the remediation that's proposed, building the cap of the building that's proposed will result in a safe site. I, I will, it is true that the slurry wall was installed to contain the PCBs. It's not correct that the slurry wall is outmoded technology. Slurry walls are well-proven, long-term-used technologies, mainly to help control water movement. And really, what we're worried about with those other contaminants is water. And the slurry wall changes the way the water moves out there, so that the water moves around it. Water really doesn't move through that slurry wall. So the slurry wall was and is an effective technology. And the remediation plan has added in sort of our latest thing that we do, which is injection of the oxidants to break down the volatile organic compounds. So that is, is the kind of modern addition that this current approach to the remediation adds. And frankly, you know, taking the PCBs, piling them in trucks, putting a bunch of, you know, carbon into the atmosphere, trucking them down to Kettelman Hills or up to, right now, you couldn't even take them to Kettelman Hills because that landfill isn't open, taking them up to Oregon or off to Nevada or wherever. I'm not sure that that, you know, what's left is in a place that will cause no harm, based on what we know. And the trade-off between taking the hot stuff off the top and leaving some behind is not a bad balance in what's proposed here. You know, it's approved by EPA, it's approved by DTSC. A lot of time and energy's gone into the study of it, and it's, it's what we do today.
How would the site correlate to Bay Street, the site B? Were you involved in that site?
Yes.
So is it comparable as far as what, what happened at Bay Street versus what you're proposing here? Are your recommendations here?
Yes. I mean, we did basically the same thing at Bay Street, excavated to the extent necessary to allow the redevelopment to occur in a cost-effective way. And we are currently conducting and continuing to conduct injection of chemicals to break down the chlorinated volatile organic compounds that are there. There are remaining concentrations of arsenic and other chemicals a concern that are above background, clearly an impact from human activities, but at a level that the risk-based assessment that we conducted says is safe for the future uses. There will be, as part of that redevelopment, vapor controls installed on the buildings. So it, it's very equivalent to what was done at Site B.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any more questions for Earl, but I would like to hear from Mr. Biddle on this no-sue clause. If we could have a little more clarification on that, because I think it is a cause of concern for the council and the community. We don't like letting people off the hook in this down.
Well, as you know, currently CBS, they control the site, and they have entered into a consent decree with the US EPA, which was entered into back in 1985. And in discussions with CBS over the years, it's been their position that by virtue of having entered into this consent decree, that, that they are protected from any ability of the city or to, you know, to pursue them, or the redevelopment agency, I should say, to pursue them, to force a greater cleanup. We evaluated that position and believe that, at the time, that the redevelopment agency, through its powers pursuant to the Planco Redevelopment Act, that we would have the ability to force a cleanup beyond what had already been done, the cap. Now, of course, that's, that's a legal position of lawyers, and it takes money to pursue lawsuits and to, to force your position upon a party. And so I think it was the, really the direction of, of the council some years back. There was a prior version of the remediation agreement and escrow agreement where the, you know, to sort of gain you know, to sort of gain CBS's cooperation and pursue a greater cleanup of the site, that the parties would split the costs of the, of the cleanup. And of course, redevelopment has gone away. Likewise, the redevelopment powers under the Planco Redevelopment Act have also gone away. However, there has been a new bill, GATO bill, that came effective in January that gives cities sort of equivalent authority, but there are some other elements to that that, that don't make it quite as flexible as it was for, for redevelopment. But in any event, it's been a negotiated position between the city and CBS and Wareham that if CBS moves forward with the cleanup pursuant to a cleanup plan that, that we approved, that we would then release them from any further claims. And this is not at all inconsistent, the position of that is not at all inconsistent with the agreement that we entered into with, let's say, HSP for the cleanup of the Greenway. And likewise, agreements that we reached in settlement with, with some of the parties on Site B where they've agreed to fund their share. They are saying they're buying peace. Okay, we're putting in money, but city, we don't want you coming back after us if the cleanup is, is conducted in accordance with the plan that you've approved. And so that's the similar position that we are proposing here tonight. We aren't indemnifying them, so we're not taking on any responsibility for any cleanup. We're just releasing them from any ability of the city to pursue them based on what we know today. It does not give them any protection from the federal government or the state government to go after them if they, you know, if they change their mind about how they want to treat various chemicals. So, which is frankly, it's not unheard of for the state, the federal government to change their mind and change course as we are currently experiencing with our sanitary sewer litigation with the federal and state government. So again, it does not give CBS any protection from the state or federal government. It just does provide them some level of comfort that the city of Emeryville is not going to pursue them in the future should they commence and complete the cleanup that's been approved by the state and federal government.
Thank you, Michael.
Other questions from council?
No questions.
I have a few other questions that are not related to the environmental portion. I don't know if we're done with that portion.
Yeah, let's, let's pick it up here.
Okay, great. I have a few questions about the Wareham buildings nearby and also the Amtrak parking. And some of these I asked of staff earlier and had a response, and I'll repeat now for the public, but some may be new and I don't know if you'll have this information handy. When we first looked at the parking for this site and the number of parking spaces, that was before we passed our new zoning code updates. And my question is that would, would the parking required again for the site also be updated according to our new parking updates? And another parallel question to that is about how many spaces are in existing Wareham buildings and what the utilization rates of those are.
So the first question is whether the parking in Emery Station West, the parking required in Emery Station West, the requirement would be changed now?
Would it be changed, would it be different if it were coming forward under our new zoning code update?
Well, yes, it would be different if, if the project were coming forward now for entitlements. It would be substantially less actually because this project is in fact right in the middle of a transit hub zone, which reduces all parking by half to begin with. But the project was entitled in 2010, and so it is subject to the parking requirements that were in effect in 2010 when it was approved.
Thank you. And as to utilization rates in current Wareham buildings, I know that building space, or parking spaces get leased by tenants, that's I understand the, the processes, but do we know what actually is used, utilization rates?
So maybe a representative from Wareham Development could answer that.
Sure. Great.
Just one clarification to what Charlie said. The project was designed before the parking ratios were lowered, but we asked for permission to have a lower parking ratio. So it was designed and approved at two per thousand, which I think is sort of in the middle, is certainly well below what the requirement was over three per thousand back at the time of its approval. We think that's the right number. So in terms of our parking, it's getting, it's very highly utilized. I mean, it ebbs and flows, but close to the top because we have followed the elevation, the evolution of Emeryville and its transit development. And so each of our projects is sort of built less parking. So we've been averaging down the total kind of ratio per square foot of our campus. And, and thank goodness, we've been doing that partially leading and partially following people's adoption of transit. So, so we're trying to only build what we have to at any one period of time to right-size it, if that answers your question. But it is highly utilized.
And is it parking shared among all the buildings? Because you have quite an extensive campus with, you know?
Well, we have the opportunity to do that so that you can right-size it. And that is a unique opportunity that you've heard share, you know, sharing of parking between different uses. It's very hard if you had three spots because there just aren't enough to diversify. We've gotten big enough that we can do that, and yes, we do.
Do you know how many total spaces you, you have?
Well, it depends on which properties you include and so forth, but I'm, you know, not giving you an exact number. I think it's, you know, 1,300 or 1,400.
Okay. And so the new, I believe it's somewhere in the 800 range for both of these, the whole project?
Yeah, 125 are public, so we're not going to count those. The 675 is effectively two per thousand for what we're, for the private portion of the project.
In one of the reports that I read for today's council packet, it talked about the number of full-time jobs that are being created by this project. And that was in the 600 range. And I was surprised that you would need more parking spaces than you have full-time equivalent employees.
Well, there are visitors to any project, so that's one of, one of the issues. The other reason it's larger is that structure sits on a surface parking lot of over 200 spaces now. So the 675 includes replacing the over 200 that are there today. So in terms of new, it's well down to 400 and something, which is the two per thousand. Our building's a little more than 200,000 square feet, so the new parking spaces are 450. And the extra are the 220 there today.
And those 220s serve primarily, well, all of your buildings or Heritage Square?
Well, it's the parking lot west of, behind of Heritage Square, and so it primarily serves the users in that building.
Okay. And is that, is that well utilized, that parking lot?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
That, for example, you were invited to an opening of a children's clinic of Stanford.
Right.
That's where if you took your kid there, you would park to take them into the clinic.
I've also seen a big sign there that has the mayor's son's name on it. Have you seen that?
Yes, Freehl.
Freehl, yeah.
Yeah, the frozen drink, yes.
Jack, I have another question for you, Jeff. After the last dollar, of course. What do you think are the chances that we could convince Amtrak to give up free parking for its patrons and go to charging for parking?
I'd certainly be interested in exploring that. You want to?
I think that's an avenue that we want to take a look at because you don't get free parking when you go to the airport. And BART is in a kind of a changing mode too. It's time we start to look at that.
You don't want to discourage ridership, but you want to encourage them to come to the train in the most efficient way.
Exactly, exactly.
If I can, I believe one of the provisions of the STIP grant that we're receiving from the state anticipates that the, the parking for Amtrak patrons will be provided gratis. So certainly something we can explore, but as I said, that's one of the provisions of the grant.
I understand that, Michael, but if you don't start the journey, you never get there.
Just advising you that that's a hurdle to overcome.
And is there someone who could talk about the utilization rates for those 125 parking places at Amtrak? Who monitors that?
I can.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, there are 215 spaces on the mound and 125 are sublet to the agency, the successor agency. But it becomes more complicated to monitor that than not. So what we are doing, so let me step back and say, that was used for sort of transient parking visitors, both Amtrak and to our campus. And for example, anyone could park there and visit any business or, or for whatever reason, they could take the pedestrian bridge across the street if they wanted to.
For the terraces.
Correct. There's parking for the terraces there. So we saw enough transient demand that a number of years ago, we opened the terraces garage to allow any empty spaces, you were talking about utilization, any empty spaces to be used by transient parkers if they were available. So if that day, office workers were on vacation or out making sales calls or whatever, you could put people in there. So we've been allowing transient parkers into the terraces for some time, including Amtrak parkers. So there are plenty of days when, you know, you can't know if people come and are paying and not Amtrak or they are. You can't, because you don't know when the Amtrak people will come and so forth. So we believe they're highly utilized. It is sometimes seasonal. Now, this year, there isn't much snow, but a typical winter, more people use the train because they go for multi-day getaways to the Sierras. They like to take the train because you don't get stuck in the pass, where almost never. So we think they're pretty highly utilized. And that's why maybe, I mean, clearly there's a legal problem, but I think Amtrak and the Capitol Corridor are practical people and they want not to discourage ridership, but they're also bringing buses to allow the riders to come. So it's, you know, the Amtrak long haul is a different thing. But I think probably the most important part of this project for the city is its commuter function.
Other questions, comments?
I do have another question for Jeff. Sorry, Jeff, don't go away. My question next is about occupancy and vacancy in terms of Wareham buildings. I know that Wareham, I think, controls most of the bio science labs, tech kind of labs in the city more than, I know you also have office space, but we have other places that have more office space and less biotech.
Right.
And so I'm curious, and also in West Berkeley, which is very closely, not only geographically, but aligned in terms of our interests, I'm curious about the, the occupancy rates in those buildings.
So they're very highly occupied. Our newest building is not, but it's a very tiny percentage overall of our whole campus and portfolio, and that's how we look at it. Second, we built that building primarily to house the kind of tenants that you mentioned we mostly house, which are people in the research, life science, green tech, medical fields. And we built the building to allow for that because you need special, not any building can handle that. And so we would have been able to lease that building three times over if we would have done normal office leasing like much of the rest of the community does. We haven't really wanted to do that because we're preserving it for what we think is a really core customer base, a key business sector that we do business with and I think provides benefits to the city.
And how does the new transit center building fit into that puzzle in terms of occupancy and vacancy?
Well, so these things don't come up in a day.
No.
They take years to build. You know, we're confident the Greenway will be filled long before this building could be ready. And one of the realities of our business is we've historically built buildings primarily speculatively. We'd love not to. We'd love for a tenant to say, build me, I'll lease the whole building, start it. It just, the market doesn't tend to work that way. We don't have the luxury, many of the companies in the science business are very funding-dependent and they need it when they need it. And if you don't have it, they go find it somewhere else. And in our business, they don't come back. Those, those tenants who have moved out of the Emeryville market, certainly more have moved out of the Berkeley market, once you lose them, they're gone. So we have sort of found it's key to keep those people rooted here by always having room for them in advance of their needs. Does that answer your question?
I guess. It's a little insurance there, extra space for expansion.
Correct.
But, and so you believe that by building, is it 248,000 square feet, that there will be a need when it's completed? That's your?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's been our experience over a long period of time.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? No? Comments? From council? Nora would you like to begin?
Sure, I'll make a comment. I just want to say that I think we've worked long and hard at this project. And I'd like to make a comment about the statement that was made that the planning commission voted against this project. That's not accurate. Two members out of a seven-member planning commission voted against the project, two voted for it, and two abstained on the project. And I think one of the statements that the no votes on the planning commission said it was not, they didn't consider that this project was in the public interest. Well, that can be a matter of semantics, a matter of definition, what you consider to be in the public interest. I think this project very much is in the public interest for this city. I think getting rid of more of the toxicity, toxicity, thank you. I agree with Kurt. I'm a little dismayed that there's going to be some residuals there, but I think it's probably, this is the best that we can do here. I also believe that if the project moved forward, the building itself will be a pretty hefty cap on the toxics. And I don't anticipate any kind of comeback to the city on, from CBS on, on any kind of litigation for, for this. So it's a good project. It's long overdue. We are in a battle now in terms of the bio science industry. We have some strong competitors, not only in South San Francisco, but also down in Fremont and Hayward now. So if we're going to keep that nucleus of bio science, it's time to move ahead on this project. So I would move the two resolutions on the project.
I think there's, there's three.
Oh, no, no. The ordinance is a different thing.
So one thing that we haven't talked about tonight is the financial arrangements that have been brokered for this deal. And I, I didn't like them last time they came to the council either. This, for me, has to do with promising our property tax revenue from the site for 12 years after completion, or it's more complicated because if the public parts are done first, it's seven years plus. I guess originally I think the deal was that we were splitting the remediation costs upfront. And there's some uncertainty with that, but certainly to me, there's additional uncertainty by promising future revenue funds. And I, I don't like that kind of gamble of the future, not knowing what will happen and what needs we might have for our general fund at that time. I also, I take issue with the idea that if we don't use some of this money, it's lost. By, by distributing money to our taxing entities, of which we are 11%, I believe, if I have the number right, it's not lost actually, that that would be some money coming back to us, but also going to other public agencies. I am glad for some site remediation, even if it doesn't go quite as far as one would hope, but it seems to be kind of on par with what we have in our town, so I think that's a plus. I'm also glad for some transit improvements that are mentioned, but it doesn't go as far as I would like. It's not as creative around transit as I'd like. And that's partly what we have in place, and maybe in the future there will be more that it will support, but it's not enough right now. I am glad for the improvement to the, to the Ped Bridge over the Amtrak rail. I feel that that connection could be improved by just about anything in some ways. But I'm going back to the, the fact that I don't like the But I'm going back to the fact that I don't like the financial arrangements for this project.
Ruth, yeah, sure. I want to weigh in a couple of things. First of all, Emeryville, through Wareham, has made a concerted effort to develop its biotech cluster, and this adds capacity to that event, to that goal. I'm not sure everybody is aware of all the cool stuff that's happening in town now around a lot of the R&amp;D efforts that are taking place, but there was a period where the biofuels that Amyris was working on, it was advertised because it was fueling one of the go-round shuttle buses. So, I think the goals that biotech has to, in terms of the problems that they're tackling and the solutions that they want to find, deserve support. I think that if this building had been operational a few years back, we might have won the bid to get LBNL.
Yeah.
And, which would have been quite a feather in our cap. I know you guys worked very hard to submit a competitive bid for that, and ultimately, UC went with land that it owned. So, I support the idea to activate that site with a much higher and better use than just a parking lot. And this represents, in my mind, really, the best and last offer to reduce the amount of surface parking and to put a constructive use on site here. I don't like the fact that the toxics, while they seem to have passed muster with two regulatory agencies, the fact that, I don't know if this is going to be as cleaned up percentage-wise, couldn't get a percentage tonight with a direct question, but how this compares, say, with Sherwin-Williams or some of the other stuff. But for the generations that come way past this existing council, I, for one, take pride in the fact that every, I can say to friends and others that every time there's a new building in Emeryville, it means that the ground underneath it is cleaner than what happened before. And in terms of being environmental stewards and in terms of protection of the public health, the two regulatory agencies have certainly weighed in on the protection for human health. And I would be remiss just to let this, let the contaminants lie there without putting a higher and better use on this land. So, for that reason, it's not, it's not ideal. We've, various council members have indicated things that we wish would come from it, but it is activating a site that the consent decree only allows for surface parking because it's too hot for anything else. And so, to me, that's an overriding public benefit, is that we're going to be able to activate that land and put it to use, and hopefully with some of the brightest and most creative minds that are tackling the problems that our world faces today. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support these resolutions. And I think that not just for this generation, but for generations to come, benefits will continue to come in direct and indirect ways.
Not a second, Ruth, with the two resolutions. Thank you.
And I'm in support of it too, and I have to, mine might be slightly different. You know, we control Bay Street as far as what happened there, we the taxpayers, and so I feel it's fair, whatever we allowed at Bay Street to have happen at the site. But that's, actually, it's the vision, that this vision that Wareham Property has had for that property for 20, 30 years. I remember what Westinghouse used to look like at that corner. And I think that there has to be a balance here. We talked about housing, we built a lot of new housing in town, but we also have to have jobs for those people that live here. So I think this is a real opportunity for, to have that community that has jobs for the people living in the city. And I think this project can bring it. And it's just the right thing. It's the vision that's been in this town for over 30 years, about making things happen. Who would have, I remember the, actually, the first time that the Amtrak station opened, I thought, what a crazy idea, putting the Amtrak station there. Now you said 1.7 million people go through it. So I meant, this is a city that has embraced crazy ideas, and the crazy ideas have worked out. So I meant, I fully support this project. It's another crazy idea, but it's a crazy idea that will be around for a long time and will provide benefits for all of us that live in the city.
Okay, and with my final comments, I'm not going to be able to support this project. I don't think that it has enough public benefits attached to it. I agree that the public plaza is going to be a replication of other mistakes, really, that we've made in having those privately operated plazas. I think that what we've seen from the Planning Commission, if we don't want to call it a no, we want to call it a deep ambivalence, and for something that's been in the works for so long, I don't think that people should feel that way about it. I think that with the amount of money that, the public money that's been, being put into this, and with the amount of time that's been spent on it, that we should have a much better project than we do. And I also am really bothered by the financial arrangements. Redevelopment is done. It is done. We should not try to create new redevelopment deals that cream off the tax increment, because with these developments, they have impacts, right? With growth, we are going to need to fund other things. We're going to need to fund our infrastructure. We're going to need to fund more services. And we are not able to subsidize developers, because we have to make sure that we're holding up our end of the bargain in terms of services. And I really think that that, you know, for all the ways that I may have felt also ambivalent about this project, that 12 years of tax increment makes me very certain that I just cannot support it. So with that, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
No.
Vice Chair Atkins.
Aye.
I'm sorry, not Chair. Mayor Asher.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No.
Okay.
Move the first reading of the ordinance.
We need to read it by, motion to read by title only, first please.
That's what I mean, motion, sorry about that, lost my head.
And, Councilmember Brinkman, you second the motion to read by...
I did. I did. Yes, sir, Mr. Biddle, I did.
Thank you, sir. So it's an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Emeryville, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement between the City of Emeryville and Emery Station Associates LLC regarding the Emery Station West at Emery Transit Center slash Heritage Square Garage Project.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Should we take a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Brinkman, aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West.
No.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Item seven, we have no policy items. We're on to item 8.1, the administrative items, Emeryville-Berkley Oakland Transit E-Bot Study. This is Charlie and Diana Keen.
Yes. So, as Mayor Asher said, this item is about the Emeryville-Berkley Oakland Transit Study, whose purpose is to think about transit in Emeryville-West Oakland and West Berkeley, how this area can be better connected to itself and to regional destinations and regional transit. This is the last meeting in the first rounds of meetings where we're assessing needs, and then we'll come back in the spring, summer with options, and then a draft report, and in January, you'll see a final report. There are many kinds of transit improvement options that could be considered as part of this study. Near-term, changes to bus routes, maybe shuttles, frequency, hours of service, last mile, station amenities. Midterm would be something like a new bus service or bus lanes, transit center improvements, bike sharing. Long-term is when we start thinking about a streetcar or a full-scale bus rapid transit. Which, the two pictures on the left are bus rapid transit infrastructure, and the one on the right is a streetcar. The community has told us that attracting development requires incentives and marketing, that parking or travel lanes maybe could be removed on some streets with, maybe we could, oh. We'll be going in a minute.
Diane, can you hang on a second?
Yeah. We're here. Just push it down the stairs.
That's disruptive. Can you close the door, Sabrina?
Well, we can't, because people have to be able to come in.
Okay. So, actually, our Policy Advisory Committee said you need to do other things besides just transit to attract development, and maybe we should, could be able to take parking or travel lanes in some situations if we negotiate with the businesses. And then the community said we need more frequent service, more in the evening and weekend, accurate next bus information and coordination, and that the Emery Go-Round should go to West Oakland, West Oakland Bart Station, should have more peak hour service, be more reliable, and serve the Watergate condos. West Berkeley and West Oakland want one too. And stops should be safe, well-lighted, clean, and well-maintained. And then there are bicyclist requests, bike lanes, awareness signs, bridges over the railroad tracks, and the marina service should be restored. The Planning Commission wants connections to the waterfronts, shopping, West Oakland Bart, downtown Berkeley, Fourth Street, and University Avenue. Fewer stops on the F-line and a campaign to get people to exit the rear door. Frequency, longer hours, more reliability, bus stop maintenance, lighting, and safety, clean fuel vehicles, possibility of giving up parking and requiring pullouts and shelters, and requiring transit passes and new development, and transit funding needs stable sources. There are funding sources, potential state, federal, and local tax measures, grants, private public partnerships, private sponsored transit and Fairbox among them. And all I want to hear from you is, what trips do people take or wish they could take? What problems do people have? What ideas or desires do people have? What trade-offs on the streets, vehicle lanes, and parking would be acceptable? And what sources of funding would be appropriate?
Can I start with the last question? If we're responding now, or if we have questions?
Any questions before you respond?
Sounds like it.
No, okay, yes, go.
I just, I come back to how this is a regional problem, and that's why we've included Berkeley and Oakland in this, but I think it's actually larger than just our three municipalities, and I see that we're looking for regional solutions as well. So, and that includes funding. So whether it's ACTC or whether we take it to the MTC level, I know that new funds will be available as we're, as California is coming into compliance with SB 375 and cap and trade as well as part of that. And I encourage additional delving into other funding sources that are not just generated here within Emeryville. A regional solution. And that goes actually for transit agencies and the running of that as well, that it's one thing to put an Emery Go-Round shuttle here, and then you'll have your West Oakland Bart shuttle that'll go there, and then you'll have your West Berkeley shuttle. I don't think that's a very good way, the infrastructure that's required in the administration to make something like that work, I think, has gotten us into this mess in a way in the region. And I would like to see a little more regional cooperation in a larger entity, perhaps, that can support good transit. And I hope those folks are in the room when you're discussing that, because I've seen that at least some of these committees include only kind of the local folks. I'm not sure if it was the Policy Advisory Committee or is it Technical Advisory Committee that had the more regional entities represented.
The Technical Advisory Committee includes someone from MTC, someone from the county ACTC, and, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and also, of course, Bart, and AC Transit, and Capitol Corridor, and the shuttle services.
Addition to the transit...
And the Policy Advisory Committee includes elected and appointed officials from those same entities.
Ruth wants to reply to Jennifer.
So, later this week, I'm going to be at a meeting about the transportation, sales, tax measures, revised expenditure plan. And there's a pot of money that explicitly lists shuttles as fitting underneath that. Not only have they been made aware of the threats to the go-round, but there are other shuttles that are also in danger. So, it could be something that could be funded, something like this could be funded through the Transportation Commission under the Technology and Innovation category.
So it's, it's contained in the current, I think it's called the TEP, the List of Projects that Could Be Funded Under the Sales Tax Management.
Yeah, there's, under the category of Technology and Innovation, shuttles will be named in that.
Thank you. That's good information.
Nora, you want to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you a question. These first three discussion questions, that's the kind of thing I wanted the answers to from the report that's going to come back from the E-Bot people. You know, what you would get from us, either in total or individually, would be kind of a very, a very small sample. So that's what I'm looking for. I was a little disappointed with the numbers of people who turned out to show up at the meetings. I was at the one in Emeryville, and we had, we had the most people, I think, of all the other, but there hasn't been enough publicity or enough buzz about this to get people really thinking about a concerted way to have people move north, south, you know, Berkeley, Emeryville, and Oakland.
We did get 800 responses to the survey. So, good people didn't come out to the meeting, but they did respond to the survey. So, our consultants are going to take all the input that they received and put that in the report.
Good.
And in terms of the fourth question, the trade-offs, the vehicle lanes, the parking, these are very, as you know, real hot button issues, vehicle lanes and parking. We saw that with AC Transit tried to get their rapid transit through from San Liandro through to Berkeley. So, I don't know what the value is of discussing this now until we get further information. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. We need more substantive information back from the transit study, at least I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of like Santa Claus, his wish list.
Right, right. Exactly, right.
That's the first part of the planning process, is making the wish list.
Right.
And then we'll be bringing options back in the spring.
Good.
So I'd be happy to kind of amplify or reiterate some of the things that I've heard from people in town and also from my own experience. The most common complaint I get, and I heard it this morning from a volunteer that I work with, who takes Emery Go-Round, is that it's just not reliable enough, and it's not robust enough, it doesn't come frequently enough, so that if you, if one bus doesn't show up, folks are there waiting 20, 30 minutes to get to Bart where they need to go. I agree with one of the comments in there about giving out more transit passes and requiring that in this entire area for new development projects, because transit passes have been shown to, well, it's different if you have free transit.
Yeah.
So it's one or the other, I suppose. Although, free transit competes with AC Transit in a way that decimates their ridership, I would think, if they're redundant. So either free transit or transit passes, which can also help reduce parking requirements, which saves huge amounts of money in terms of capital costs, but this is operating and maintenance, or operating costs for transit passes, it's a little different pots of funds. Did you want to say something, Ruth?
Yeah, I would just say that the money that we, that is spent on the go-round, AC Transit doesn't serve us as well, and they wouldn't with that amount of money either.
Uh-huh. So... I think they used to have more service here, I've heard before.
Yeah, but it was never, it's not as good, even at its most robust, it wasn't as good as what we have now with the go-round.
But it went other places besides MacArthur-Bart.
True.
So if you could connect, the map that Diana showed us connects, I think it was the 19, is that what was taken away?
That went down Hollis and Sixth Street and Berkeley.
Right. So there are other... So there are other places that people want to get to that are hard to get to if you're not trying to get to MacArthur-Bart or somewhere else close by. I mentioned already about funding being regional, but I think it also needs to be steady, which is kind of like a duh.
That's very hard.
And hard, and also it needs to be controlled by public entities. I think what we've seen recently is a concern around that and who's making the decisions. And I want to talk about transit's reach and the way to measure that. When Kurt mentioned the importance of having jobs nearby, I agree, and I think I've seen transit measured as how many jobs can be accessed by transit within a certain amount of time, so it's like a travel shed or commute shed, I think it's called. And perhaps that could be incorporated as part of this, and, and, you know, with some places people live, it's like, oh, I can get there within a half an hour, that's great. Well, if we live in Emeryville, getting somewhere within a half an hour isn't great, actually. I think we have a, maybe a different standard for how far, or how long it should take to get somewhere. We want it to be quicker than that. I mentioned not a whole bunch of small agencies, I don't think that's the best way to deliver good transit, and to combine efforts really with car-sharing locations, bike ed improvements, we've heard a lot of those, I think good ideas were raised, but really, this has to be done in concert with those other efforts, it's not all by itself. Last year, when we were talking in Emeryville about reducing parking and putting in green curbs in the North Hollis area, you know, some people were saying, you take away our parking, but we don't have alternative ways to get places. That's not fair to people who are impacted by that, and it's chicken and egg, you don't know which to do first, but having a push, having the emphasis on finding good transit solutions, I think, is a step. I'd like to see more input, more public engagement always, and to hear more of what's discussed, even at the Technical Advisory Committee. I feel like this report produced comments from the community workshops, and the Policy Advisory folks were listed, but not the Technical Advisory, and I'm curious what other conversations, or maybe that was incorporated and it just wasn't explicitly stated, but what other conversations are coming out of that? I'm willing to look at reducing parking for more efficient transit as well, although we have a reduced number of streets in town that we can do that, for sure. Thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, well, just to take, like, for an N of one, to try to get a little more feedback, like what you just did, I do think we need better service to UC, that there's a lot of students and employees that need to get to UC Berkeley better, and there's not good public transportation there. So I know that that's not really the geographic bounds of the EBOT study that was, I thought it was kind of making to West Berkeley, but.
We're looking at how to connect the area to itself and to regional transit and to regional destinations. So that's one of them.
So, so, you know, I made some comments on an earlier agenda item, just kind of obliquely referencing the fact that our intellectual engine is UC Berkeley, and I think we need to invest some capital into that in terms of increasing the connections there with this, with the university, because that's going to reap all kinds of benefits. So in terms of a destination, and I think we need a combination of transportation from home and work, and then home and play, however that's defined in this, in this particular area. But I know I walk to the movies in town, I don't get into a car, you know, and it would be nice if, to do that, it'd be nice if this kind of transit could somehow incentivize people taking it to play, not just, not just for utilitarian reasons.
And the only thing I'll add, Diana, is that the comments that I hear from residents are the extension to West Oakland Bart, right, so an easier way to get over there, and then also, anything we can do to improve bike safety on San Pablo. Planning ahead for that is fine, but if there's some, it's fine to have a grand vision, but if there's some kind of intermediate measures that could be taken with that, because people do ride along San Pablo, and it's extremely dangerous.
Crazy.
Yeah.
Let's go back to the sharos idea. Oakland has sharos.
I'll stop the truck.
Okay.
That's a what?
Definitely stop.
Is that everything you need, Diana?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I do.
City is housing successor, we have nothing there. Communications and reports, department heads. No, no, nobody. Okay, council members, anything? No, okay. Council members reporting on meetings attended. Okay, all right, the, we have community advisory body vacancies, two vacancies on the Child Development Center Advisory Committee, one on the Finance Advisory Committee, and one on the Public Art Committee. And Vice Mayor Atkins has asked that we adjourn the meeting with a moment of silence for the art officer that was killed in the line of duty in Dublin today, and with that, I'll adjourn our meeting.